...ticket to the market. And one of the reasons we want to do that, in the, at the July 2011 Strategic Planning Session, under improved financial stability and maintenance of reserves, we were trying to figure out how to come up with more money for the city to help. And one of the things was to own and operate a concession stand at the market. So it was discussed and it was agreed upon that we would add that to our project list. What we did is, we put together some rough numbers on what we wanted to do. And what we wanted to do was install permanent buildings out at the market, but it just wasn't feasible to do it. The cost was $106,000 for one building, not including water, sewer, and all the connections. Then we looked at a trailer, again, wasn't feasible, $60,000 for a trailer, plus still having to get it licensed and tagged, and then what would we do when we were done using it? So what we did is, we contacted Tough Shed, and they make a concession stand building. Sounds kinda weird, you're expecting them to put tools in it, but no, they actually make concession stands for people. And the cost was reasonable, it was $25,000 just for the building that was outfitted to beat specs for the health department and building and planning. So, what we did is, we took that information, met with the Sacramento County Health Department, and the Building Department, and CSD. And after everybody took a look at what we wanted to do, they all bought off on it, with just a few requirements of having blueprints, and building not to exceed 15 by 15. Of course, we have to meet code, no open flame cooking at the building, and a commissary site would be used at the sports complex. So, the total cost for the project for the first year will be $123,250. That includes two one-time costs of $25,000 for the building, $20,000 for equipment such as microwaves, refrigerators, shelving, and you're probably going, "Why $20,000 for that type of equipment?" Well, it has to be commercial grade. You can't go to Lowe's and buy a regular refrigerator for $300, it just, it doesn't meet code. The commercial grade equipment is quite expensive, so that's the number that we came up with. So, after the initial cost of $123,000, the city projects to bring in revenues of around $21,000 to $22,000 a year after this first year, after the first one-time cost. So, if council approves the concession stand, we will still operate concessions with the food vendors we currently have at the Galt Market. We will not stop them from coming in, we will just compete next to them. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Council, any questions, comments?
Yes. If I could?
Sure, Councilman Singleton.
Mr. Solis, is this gonna be on the grounds of where we have the market now, or is it gonna be, it's not gonna be portable, in other words, right, it's gonna be a stationary building?
Semi-stationary, it'll be a, we will be able to move it. It won't be a permanent structure.
Okay, well, my question, reason I'm asking that is, so, is this only gonna be open during the market hours, or are we gonna be able to have this, say, for instance, if we have baseball tournaments or something, would we be able to move it to that field so we can sell concessions there also?
No, it's not that type of mobile.
Not that type, okay.
Not that type of mobile. And it will be right on Food Row, right along the rest of the food vendors.
What type of concessions are you planning on?
We plan on having hot dogs, and this is just a proposed menu. We would like to expand if we can. We'll be selling candy bars, sodas, coffee, Gatorades, ice cream, pizza, nachos, those type of things, stuff that we're currently selling at our other concession stands.
I would encourage, just a side suggestion, health food type things too, people are really trying to eat and be fit and healthy, we could also add to that.
We're kinda limited in what we can serve, just because of the conditions that the health department has put on us, but that, I'd love to do that, if at one point we can put in permanent buildings.
Just a second, just a side thought for future. Thank you.
Councilman Shelton, or Cruz?
Yeah, I have a question. You said it's semi-portable, and I am familiar with Tough Shed having those. Where exactly is it? I guess my, the reason I ask is, let me explain, because we have the fireworks show coming up, and I don't know if you're gonna have to, if we did have it there, say, right now, would we have to move it for the show, or?
I don't believe we would, but I would leave that up to the discretion of CSD.
And you're working with him, too?
Yes, we've been in contact with Brian Clark.
Okay, alright. Thanks.
Councilman Cruz? I think you have a comment from, I do have a public comment, Tony, I'm sorry, Tony Pascall?
Hi, my name is Tony Pascall. I've been a resident and a food vendor out there for a while now, maybe 17 years, and I often like to say, I think the market's doing good right now because of good, hard-working vendors, great management staff, but this food stand, if they put in a building that's 1,600 square feet, well, that space is that are being rented, an income that comes rain or shine right now. You lose that with that stand, plus the cost of employees, and I don't know about the food, food costs, anybody out there that's selling food out there, selling it, it's taking at least 30% right off the top for the, for the supply, not to mention the employees, and if you're gonna have employees, and insurance, and everything else involved. And also, as far as the competition, I don't personally believe that if the market opens up food stand, if they plan to sell tacos, Chinese food, coffee or smoothie, I don't think they can compete against the vendors that are out there, really. I really, really do not. I've seen vendors come, and I've seen vendors go, and the vendors that are there are there, it's hard to take, like the flea market, you get the same customers over and over and over. It's gonna be, it's hard to take the customer away from somebody that's stopped at the same stand for a number of years, so, and I just don't believe that the, as far as the market can compete that way. The only way they can possibly compete is maybe ask the vendors that are, they're selling those products, at least, because they're not going to, there's no way, I sell coffee and smoothie, people walk up to me and ask me, "Hey, you pay for that?" I said, "I paid for this with my sweat and blood." And I don't think you can get that from employees, you know what I mean? And like I said, as far as the taco, there's three taco vendors out there, they're, I don't believe that the market can sell tacos and compete against those guys, because those customers have been going to these certain vendors for X amount of years, and they're not, they're not gonna compete. Even myself, I sell coffee. If the market decided to sell coffee, I don't, you know, they may be able to compete against me, but I don't believe the vendors that are there, which is a very important part of my business, are gonna go and buy coffee there, or a smoothie, and the same thing with whatever the product's being sold in the flea market right now. I think the numbers that they think they might sell is, might be a little bit higher than they're actually gonna get sold, and as far as American food, I've been working out there for 17 years, there is no American food, and there's a reason for it. They don't make it.
Mr. Pascall?
They don't make it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Oh, were there any other comments from the public? I have no other speaker sheets on this item. Mr. Walters, please come up.
Rick Walters now live in the city. I just wanna know, Jason, did you go to the vendors and tell them that they're gonna lose money two or three or four years from the time you put this in? Did you tell them they're gonna lose money? Did you?
This is an opportunity for public comment. Do you have a public comment that you would like to make?
I'm asking if you personally went out there and told them that they're gonna lose money by putting this facility in. That's one point.
And, Mr. Walters, I think the point the city manager's trying to make is, this is your opportunity to say-
I understand, but you've asked, you've asked my questions before, and so, this is not far from that.
I know, but we-
So you just don't wanna answer the question, you just wanna take my testimony?
We wanna hear, yeah, we wanna hear what you have to say, your comments. If your comment would be, "I think you should go out and ask the vendors," then that would be great.
But I have to ask the question, because none of you up there have said anything about this that I've heard so far. You've gone around your robb, round robin, and you haven't said anything.
Well, I haven't had a chance to say anything.
Okay, okay, so, thank you.
You're welcome. And I would emphasize that this is an opportunity for you to make a comment, and I believe that the staff and the council members are willing, I can say for myself, and I feel confident the others, we're willing to meet with any of you at any time. And then you have more time to discuss it, so please feel free to make appointments or call us, and we'd be very happy to talk with you. We wanna hear your input. Now, for my thoughts on this, how much did we project we would lose the first year? How much expenses over revenue, I think it's in your report?
Yeah. About 20, about the $21,000, I believe. But that also includes the loss of space rental that Mr. Pascall talked about, we did account for that, it accounted for staffing, it accounted for everything that he had mentioned.
My thoughts on this, in a year when our budget is so tight, when we are working our staff more hours than they actually have been working for less money, that this is not a year for us to knowingly go into a project that we, we feel like we're gonna lose money on. I feel like the idea is very good, I would just like for us to maybe postpone it until the economy gets better. And I know that our Parks and Recs people are working doubly hard, and even though I feel like your heart's in the right place, I just don't feel like asking them to take on another new project that we know is gonna lose money. My support would go towards postponing it. We have it on our goals, and we have some that go out two or three years from now. I would suggest that we postpone it for a year or two and see how the economy is. I know that we believe in the long run we could make money, but we're thinking we're not gonna make money this year, so I just can't see why we'd put ourselves in that position. The other thing that I do have a concern about is for the city to go into competition with the vendors out there. I think one of our goals has always been to try to have good relationships with the, with our business people, and I'm thinking their business people just like if they had a storefront. I think most of them have been loyal for several years. So, I would have a hard time supporting this at this time, I would be very happy to push it off, to consider sometime in the future, but I, I would not be able to support it tonight. That's my comments. Okay, you've-
I'm inclined to agree with you, put it off for a year or so.
Now, we have a recommendation from the staff, so I would ask the council where they wanna go with this. Councilman Shelton, do you have a comment?
Thank you. I have a recommendation that, one is that we accept this as a report, and actually review this for the next coming year and bring it back, to see if there is a need, and maybe the finances will change. In the meantime, I would just like to ensure that the report, when it does come back, that it does have some conversations or data that we have discussed, you know, with the vendors. I mean, let them know that this is a possibility of something that we are considering doing, and you're here and you have a business that we have to consider, you know, business for ourselves, too.
I could support that. Like, I can make that into a motion.
Would you please?
Add second to that motion.
Okay, I think we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on this before we move on? If not, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Thanks, Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion, the new motion has passed unanimously, but I did want to add that we requested the staff to put this together, and I appreciate the time and effort that you put in on it. I know you were doing it under our direction, and I just wanted to make that clear, that you have done exactly what we asked, you brought us the information, and we will consider it when we feel like the time is better.
Thanks. Thank you, Armando. Dan?
Next item, Human Resources Department, approval of proposed salary range for the senior building inspector position.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is a report that was originally presented on April 3rd, and was requested by council to be brought back during the budget process, and it does tie into what will be presented a little bit later. As we discussed on April 3rd, in looking at the senior building inspector position and the building inspector position, there is quite a bit of what we call salary compression or compaction, so that it's not really a lot of incentive to promote and attract and retain good quality candidates, so we're recommending that we change the salary range for the building, senior building inspector, which would make it more in line with other positions within the agency, within the city that have usually at least 10% or more above their first individual that reports to them. So, the recommendation is to change the building inspector, senior building inspector salary range, and through the budget process, we will hopefully be reclassifying the building inspector to the senior building inspector position if this, if everything is approved tonight. The incumbent has been in the position acting out of class for two and a half years, and meets all the minimum requirements above and beyond actually the minimum requirements of the senior building inspector position, excuse me. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any questions from the council? No? No?
So, we're currently physically talking about an individual now, not something in the future. I mean, we are, but we're not.
Well, the salary range, this is the HR side of me, is that we are talking about the salary range, what is correct and what should be, you know, what is fair and equitable throughout the, the city. But yes, if it is approved and the budget is approved tonight, it will affect an individual because they have requested a reclassification which will be approved.
Technically, there's two items. First one is just the salary range for the senior building. Later tonight, you'll have the budget presentation, and if you prove the budget as presented, then it would, it would unfreeze the senior position and freeze the senior, technically the only one you're really considering, but they do go together.
Right. When you brought it before, and I was the one that voiced my opinion strongly, I see a vision now, so it makes clear sense to me. Thank you. I support it.
Any other comments?
No, I was still wanting to vote last time, so I'm still with you.
Okay, well-
It's important.
I would also like to comment again, and I hate to be the negative person tonight, but a senior building inspector description says he is in a, he is in a, he is in a management position. And we only have a building inspector, yes, we have had a permit specialist that was basically a clerk in there at the same time, but I do not see, it's almost hard to understand why we have a senior building inspector to manage someone that we don't have. We don't have a building inspector, we only have one person in that department, and as I read the description, the job description of a senior building inspector, it very clearly says that he will manage others, he will do evaluations and training. And I don't see that that has happened in the past, where he would be working out of class, maybe I just haven't been totally informed, but it's hard to imagine how, with only one person in that department, that he could be doing all of those things. The other thing, I'm gonna go back to the budget, which we've been studying, and we're talking about a position that to me is not necessary at this time, but it's also increasing our budget. And I do not understand why would we even be considering it, if it's gonna increase our costs. I understood what you said, that we're looking at trying to be a little more equal in the, I guess, the mid-management position. But again, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're even bringing this forward when we don't need that position, in my opinion. And if you would like to respond to that, I'd be happy to listen.
I will say a couple things, and Jason, I'm sure will probably want to add to it. Yes, the supervision is a part of it, this is a mid-management level position, and they would be directing the work of the permit position either full-time or part-time, but that's only a portion of it. Also, it's the complexity and the level of responsibility in the work, because we have, we used to have a building official, a senior building inspector, a building inspector, another permit tech, and this person, like you said, is the only really person left in that department that has taken on all of the responsibilities from the building official, you know, as much as possible downed. So, whether we are going to promote him to the new salary range, we're probably going to still be promoting him into the senior building inspector position, because he should be reclassified. He's doing the work at that level, not as the building inspector position.
So who has he been managing, and who has he done evaluations for?
Well, as I mentioned, that would be just, that's a part of it, but also, the senior level is in the complexity of the work and the job assignments and the level of responsibility. So, you're right, he's not had direct supervision that I'm aware of, and maybe Sandy or Jason might be able to chime in on, but that is only a portion of the responsibilities of that position.
And I'm under the impression that we do contract out some of our more complex plan-checking and inspections, such as the Galt Place, which it seems like, according to the job description, that should be something that he should be very familiar with. And let me just say one more thing, this is not a personal issue with this person, because I know that he has represented the city very well, that he's built up a good relationship with our contractors. My problem with this is, I think we're opening a position that is not necessary, that will cost us the city more money. And we have not issued a residential inspection for over two years, we may have some in the future, but I just don't think this is the time that we want to look at expanding our costs and our, our building departments.
Just a couple of things, even though we may have contractors and consultants, it's not that they completely do everything. You know, your employee has to be the project manager, so, just to add that, that even though we did have maybe a consultant for Galt Place, that person, our building inspector, oversaw that and made sure that it was completed and managed, you know, overall end product.
I think, I think the discussion has been, has been fair, some of these different opinions about what's right and what's not right. I think the cost is an issue, the impact to the city is about $2,300 a year, so while there is an impact, it's a minor impact. I think when we look at positions and the way we set up our salary classifications, is we've tried to be fair and equitable for employees, and we look at this position, and you have a building inspector that is essentially running that division, we would never have just a regular rank-and-file person running a division without the commensurate title and responsibilities. We've essentially asked this person to run that division over the last two and a half years without the proper title or authority to do such, and it's something that we need to address, and I'm recommending that we address it this time in order to be equitable in the way we treat our employees. But certainly, there's, you know, differences of opinion, and we respect that.
We are paying him out of class, and when you said $2,300, that isn't very much money to me, and, you know, I'm totally going with, I think if someone does something above and beyond, he should be rewarded for it, and I also feel, like I said before last time when we were doing it, you gotta know what the position is and give it a classification before you can put somebody in there anyway, not the other way around. And I always think that it's good to have job descriptions of anything in order to put someone into it, so, I'm agreeing with going forward with the job description.
If I could chime in just a little bit, as the acting Community Development Department's Director, one of the things that John does is, you know, there are no, like you said, no new residential, new construction permits, but there are tons of HVAC change-outs, window change-outs, the various patio covers, shade shelters, sheds over 120 square feet, sign permits, all those kinds of permits, that John does a lot of the plan checks in-house, and he also does all the inspections. We also regularly meet with prospective clients, today we had one with a fairly large commercial operation, and those meetings were expected to give those clients detailed information that they can then go back and prepare their plans. And John's the only one in our department that knows the building code part of that. We have fire there for fire stuff, we have public works there for public works, and planners do the planning stuff, but John's the only one that knows the, the building codes well enough to give that information. And that's with Walmart coming on and some of the larger commercial really starting to ramp up, we feel that that's an important attribute that John has. His education is well above and beyond the minimum requirements for not only the building inspector, but the senior building inspector. So we really do feel that John has put in the time, and he has the knowledge. Most building inspectors have some time under a senior building inspector, so that if issues come up in the field, they can ask questions and go for expertise. He hasn't had a lot of that, he's been able, he's been had to do all the research, talk to other counterparts and other building departments to get that, so, I would certainly recommend the reclassification be moved forward.
I appreciate that. Any other comments from staff or council?
Oh, I got one other comment. I mean, I would hate to be in the position, which I have a few times, where I was in charge of a program and not getting the full salary and benefits when people in other state and municipalities were doing the same thing I was doing, but they were getting, you know, the classification and everything else. I know sometimes it's a little difficult for us as elected officials, and this is kinda doing it in reverse, but I'm agreeing with you, Mary Lou, too, that I think this is the right thing to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Then, I would again say that I, I just feel like the description for this position is clearly management, it says this class is distinguished from building official, and that the latter has management responsibilities, and if he has no one to manage, I can't see how we can have that. But that's only my opinion, I'm hearing from everybody else.
Just one other thing to say, there are a lot of managers that don't manage people. I know it says it in there, but you manage a bunch of different other things, you know, so, just because you're a manager doesn't always mean that you're managing people, you could be managing other things like files and-
I know, but this specifically talks about people, because he talks about evaluations and training. But, anyway, I think we've discussed it enough, I think you're probably ready for the question, maybe not?
Nope, I actually moved to accept the recommended action.
Okay. We have, and we have a second, roll call vote, please, unless there's any other discussion. Go for it.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Powers.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
I just wanna say I respectfully agree with Barbara, but I also have to say aye to this motion.
I think that was a yes.
Yes. Oh, I said aye. I said aye, it does make sense.
Okay, Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
No. The motion has passed 4-1.
Can I just make one clarifying comment, that when it's referring to the latter as management, that's referring to the building official, just FYI, so just to make note of that.
Senior building inspector.
Right, on the one that I, that I have, from our files.
Right, on the one that I, that I have from our files. Okay. Okay, but that's, let's move on. I think everyone expressed their opinion, including myself, and now we're ready to go to the next item.
Next item, community, community development department proposed changes to the architectural review requirements and procedures for new single-family residences, including those in 13 previously approved subdivisions.
Thank you, and good evening. This is one of the streamlining measures that staff came to council with several months ago, so we are finishing this particular item up tonight. The term architectural review, I'll probably throughout the presentation just call it ARC for ease, it does, in this instance, we're just talking about architectural review for new single-family homes. It's staff under the site plan review provisions already does sort of design review for commercial, industrial, multifamily, those types of uses, so single-family homes is what we're focused on this evening. The first question we ask is why was ARC established? Architectural review for single-family homes did not exist in GALT prior to 1999. Up until that time, home builders had to meet zoning requirements for setbacks, building heights, and maximum lot coverage for their subdivision, but they were pretty much free to build whatever home type they could sell. However, the housing boom of the 1990s, many of you were here for that boom, resulted in significant growth in GALT, and many of the home builders were taking advantage of the baby boomer crest into homeownership, homeownership at that time, so they favored GALT's relatively inexpensive land costs and the fact that 64% of our vacant land was zoned for single-family residential 6,500-square-foot lots, and about 16% was zoned for 5,500-square-foot lots. This resulted in an abundance of new homes that were targeted for first-time home buyers and new families seeking affordable housing. The larger number, or the large number of homes constructed in this time period started to result in a monotonous development pattern and architectural style. So in 1999, city council at that time decided to rezone all of the vacant remaining, what we call small lot zones, up to 10,000-square-foot lots, and to adopt an architectural review process and a committee that was intended to improve the aesthetic value of the homes. The idea was that either developers would be encouraged to build a different housing type and style on these larger lots, or they would have to request a rezone back to the smaller lots, and at that time they would be required to submit their architectural plans for approval by the city. The objectives that are stated in the municipal code are up on the screen. As you can see, they're fairly vague objectives, basically encourage architectural diversity, preserve and enhance neighborhood appearance through creative design, achieve compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, and balance his housing stock by providing different housing types to meet the diverse needs of the community. There's no real guidance here for the home builder, or for staff, or the planning commission for that matter, to evaluate architectural floor plans and elevations to determine whether they feel that it meets the city's ideals. Consequently, home builders are left to kind of guess what the city is looking for, and as you know, personal taste can vary widely from one person to another. So I'm gonna talk about in the, at the end of the presentation, staff's recommending that if the ARC procedures are revised, as we're recommending tonight, that a second step be that we actually look at developing some at least basic design guidelines, so that home builders would have an idea when they're going to submit to planning commission whether they're likely to be approved or not. In order to apply for an ARC approval, the zoning code currently requires that a developer meet the density requirement, or the diversity requirements in the table on the screen. Depending on the number of lots in the subdivision, they have to have a minimum number of floor plans and a minimum number of different elevations. Basically, the front of the home has to look differently. So if you have three different floor plans, those have to have a total of nine different looks to each one. Typically, it's, it's three for each floor plan. The ARC also, the developer has to provide an architectural theme for the development. We've had a lot of California Mediterranean, which is sort of the stucco terracotta red tile roof. There's been some recent tendency towards sort of a Tuscan-inspired look, so that type of theme or style needs to be prevalent in the design. They need to show the general colors and materials that they're proposing to use on the homes, and the proposed layout of the different homes within the subdivision. The idea here is that staff looks to make sure that you don't have one wildly popular floor plan and elevation that gets built throughout the subdivision, that they have a reasonable dispersment of the various floor plans and elevations throughout, and that you don't have typically two of the same elevations next door to one another. Subdividers are required to submit an application fee of $352 for staff time and $280 to pay for the public hearing notice in the newspaper, so it's a $632 application fee. They also are required to provide the 500-foot radius mailing list and the envelopes and postage for notifying the various neighbors within 500 feet of the property. It then goes to a public hearing before the planning commission, who currently has a three-fifths vote requirement to approve an ARC plan, and that is all done prior to final map approval or improvement plans, whichever comes first. So that was the current ARC process. And before 2011, unfortunately, the ARC process was much more cumbersome. We had a separate ARC committee that consisted of two city council members, one planning commissioner, so there was a separate meeting. That body made a recommendation to the planning commission if it was a tentative map, if there was a rezone, then it involved a third hearing before city council. ARC approval was required far earlier in the process. They had to get approval prior to rezone or tentative subdivision map. Unfortunately, that tends to be years before any home builder is actually gonna start breaking ground and building a home. So what happened was you ended up with sort of outdated plans by the time they actually put a shovel in the ground. And then, to make it matters worse for a home builder, modifications to an approved ARC were generally required to have the same process as a rezone. So if it was a rezone that approved the ARC originally, they had to go back through the entire rezone process just to modify their ARC, to add another home design, to change one of their existing home designs. So between 2000 and 2009, there were 13 different subdivisions that got approved. Most of these, all of them except chancellor states number six, had a rezone attached to them. Chancellor six was just subject to the subdivision map. They were all subject to the more onerous architectural review process. What staff is recommending with these amendments is that that slate be sort of wiped clean, that we adopt an ordinance that would say that all of the rezone conditions that were placed on these projects be eliminated, and that they, like any other subdivider, go through the same process, which is the new ARC process, so it just goes to the planning commission. The planning commission also adopted on May 10th a resolution that did the same thing for subdivision conditions, because usually they were repeated on the rezone ordinance and the subdivision resolution, but their resolution is obviously contingent on city council's approval of the ordinance tonight. So these are the subdivisions. In case you're not familiar with where they're at, we kind of put together this exhibit that shows generally the location of those projects throughout the city. So the reason we're here tonight to talk about ARC amendments, we want to encourage home builder innovation. Housing needs in the community change pretty rapidly, and consumer demands also change, so we want to allow a home builder the opportunity to respond to those without it costing a lot of money and taking a lot of time, but we still want to preserve the opportunity for the public to have input and to review those changes. We want to encourage housing diversity by reducing the hurdles for new home builders. We find a lot of times a new home builder will want to enter GALT and buy some of the lots in one of these existing subdivisions to build on, but when we tell them the process they're gonna have to go through to substitute, get approval of their new floor plans and elevations, a lot of them have decided not to proceed. Another reason for making the amendments is to clarify the zoning code differences between planned unit developments and ARC, I'll talk about those in a little bit, to specifically address the approval of ARC modifications, and again, to rescind or modify certain past zoning and subdivision conditions consistent with new ARC procedures. Basically, we want to put a level playing field out there competitively so that the home builders in existing approved subdivisions play by the same rules as any new subdivider. So into the specific amendments, there's three really minor amendments, they're more housekeeping than anything. We have a combining district in the code that's called design combining. In my 22 years with the city, we have never used that designation for anything, so we're recommending that instead of that, we're gonna replace that with architectural review. It's a little more descriptive, so we would just replace DCU with ARC. Second one is to amend the zoning map and the legend accordingly, to replace, currently we use the PD combining district designation, it's a suffix that gets attached to, like R1CPD. Basically, all it means is you have to go through architectural review, but most developers, that's not an intuitive kind of suffix, so we're gonna add the ARC to make it a little more understandable to them. And third, there is a list in the code of all of the general duties that are assigned to the planning commission for approval. ARC is not currently listed, so we wanted to just add it to that list. That amendment got missed in 2011. When you get into the chapter that addresses the architectural review process, there are some basic amendments that we are proposing. First, we want to make it clear that ARC only applies to the original home construction, not to any subsequent revisions, not to room additions, or repainting, or changing to stucco, or anything after the home is finalized. The second is the, we recommend that there be a voting change. The current code basically requires a three-fifths vote of the planning commission in order to approve an ARC. That can be somewhat difficult when you only have five members on your planning commission. We are recommending that it just be changed to a majority vote of the quorum present. The next amendment is to specifically address modifications to an approved ARC plan and how those are addressed. That would be through the planning commission approval at a notice public hearing if those modifications are substantial. Insubstantial modifications could be approved by the community development director without a public hearing. And the next one is to change various references, and this is really confusing, and it's a very esoteric discussion, but we have various references in the code to planned development and planned unit development. They are two different things. Planned unit development basically allows someone to apply for a rezone to very development standards, like Emerald Village Senior, that project was a planned unit development. They don't have public streets, they have varying lot sizes, setbacks, that sort of thing. The PD without the U just means it needs architectural review, so instead of that, there's just gonna be the ARC suffix now. This next section in the PUD code section, it never, there's a whole bunch of requirements that someone has to go through to get approval of a planned unit development, but it never lists architectural review as one of them. So staff's recommending that we include that, refer them back to the ARC process, that it's just another component of getting a PUD approved. So back to the rezone conditions for the 12 previously approved subdivisions that we talked about. Staff is asking council to adopt an ordinance that would rescind all of the ARC-related conditions on those rezone approvals. Again, this would level the competitive playing field by letting home builders in those affected subdivisions abide by the same ARC rules as everyone else. The planning commission, like I said, has, has already approved a resolution that would modify the tentative map conditions. That is subject to their, the owner's consent, we can't unilaterally amend map conditions, but I don't know why any subdivider would not consent to that, so we don't think that's gonna be a problem. But their, their approval on the 10th is subject to your approval tonight. The planning commission did consider this report on May 10th. They recommended 5.0, that city council adopt the ordinances noted in the staff report. There were a couple of minor revisions. The first, we had an incorrect council hearing date in the second ordinance, it had the June 5th date instead of May 29th, so we've made that modification. The second one was based on some public testimony. Members of the public did not like the change that would allow staff to approve insubstantial modifications to an ARC. They wanted all modifications to go through the public hearing process to the planning commission. So the planning commission, the sort of compromise that was made in the planning commission motion was that the term insubstantial modification would be further defined when the planning commission and city council adopted a design guidelines document, and that was specifically set forth what types of insubstantial modifications staff was allowed to approve. So that was the recommendation made by planning commission. Staff's recommendation is still the same, that the language be left as insubstantial modifications, but that is up to city council consideration tonight. This is the slide, the proposed language that the planning commission modified, basically taking out, we had originally put some examples of insubstantial modification into the text, the blue text would be removed, and the underline text would replace it. So again, the term insubstantial modification shall be as defined by the planning commission in adopted design guidelines or by separate resolution. As I mentioned briefly before, assuming these amendments are approved tonight, staff would recommend that we have probably a future workshop with the planning commission and city council, and start talking about development of some draft design guidelines for single-family homes, get some direction from you, and then we can probably work with the planning commission to develop the actual document, and then come back to city council for approval of that. So unless we hear otherwise, we will proceed with setting that up in the next few months. And that concludes my report. We did have a minor change on the voting requirement. We're recommending that the second ordinance before you tonight be slightly amended. Section 18.24.025D would read "plan approval period," notwithstanding section 2.70.080B, approval of a submitted plan by the planning commission will require a majority vote of the commission quorum present. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Can I offer a slightly different change to the language that you just mentioned, the notwithstanding?
Sure, absolutely.
By the way, John Hobbs, acting city attorney, for those of you who don't know who I am, I would actually suggest that the language be a little bit broader to say notwithstanding any other provision of this code, in the event that the code section that you referenced gets renumbered or changed, or something to that effect, make it a little bit broader.
Thank you. Did you get that, Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to have public comment for the council members' comment? Council, okay, let's go to public.
Thank you. I provided copies of what I'm going to read, because as fast as I can read it, it took me four minutes, so I'll try and skip some of this. My name is Callie Kiki, I do live in one of those subdivisions, River Oaks. I am concerned about the changes being made, primarily two of them, the one with the insubstantial modifications, to prove something, we don't know what the list is, to me, that's just, it's pretty scary. Staff acknowledged that it will be difficult to strictly define what kinds of modifications may be considered insubstantial absent specific guidelines. The planning commission then took into consideration the public testimony and concerns, discussed and recognized the potential problems in the absence of such established applying criteria, and then made a unanimous recommendation to city council to require the term insubstantial modifications to be further defined by a later planning commission meeting with public input. We talked about workshops and that kind of thing, and with the verbiage that's being voted on, it says nothing about public workshops or anything like that, it says, it just says... It just says that they're going to do it at a later date than it's whatever guidelines they passed. The next concern that I have is the voting change made at a three-fifths vote to a simple majority, which is only two out of three commissioners. They said... We asked why... Leanne actually asked, well, why would you even consider changing that? And one of the main reasons is that somebody did want to come in and make a change. They only meet once a month, 30 days, and they said, well, that person would have to wait 30 days. Well, I found out you can hold a special meeting, you just require a minimum 10-day notice for the public, so they wouldn't have to wait that long. So you wouldn't... There would be no need to change that for two out of three votes, when you just notice the public for 10 days, and then all five people can be there. If you can't get five people together once a month, then they shouldn't have taken that position, to me. I mean, I would, you know, some of you guys vote your person in. That's a pretty critical thing that if you have a meeting and you're trying to change a subdivision, they should be there. And it should require a three out of five vote, to me. And if we do... And you can hold a special meeting. So to me, I don't think that change should be made at all. When we bought our home, and with... We live in the Elliott Homes. You know, you walk into the sales office, you have the little shadow box, you pick out your lot, you walk through the, you know, the model homes, you pick out your upgrades, and then you buy into this master plan community. Well, then they don't finish, and then they can just come here and just, you know, you just... When you buy into this master plan community, you know what's going down the street, next door, you know, and these insubstantial modifications. Well, whose opinion is that? Sandy? The next person that's going to be the community developer? You know, the community development director? That's scary to me. It was just some of the suggestion they said was a garage count. That's huge. You go from a...
Ms. Keighley, your time's up. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I can't read your letter.
Thanks, Kelly.
Good evening, council members. I'm Patrick O'Flaherty. I live in the same development that Kelly does, and I was also in attendance on May 10th at the Planning Commission meeting. And just for some clarification as to what Ms. Keighley said earlier, there were some concerns and objections voiced by members of the community that night. More specific was the issue of insubstantial modifications. I understand that, you know, the council and the city itself want to motivate the builders to come back in and start development here again in the city. They've done that already by cutting fees to, you know, kind of attract and provide more interest and stimulate this as the get-go. The insubstantial modification issue was the sticking point for many of us, because basically, they want to transfer this authority and responsibility from something that's done with a quorum to an administrative position in the absence of an actual existence of any written criteria or defining information. And so our primary objection was that before that's allowed to take place, before any decisions are made administratively, that we requested, and the city Planning Commission listened to the testimony, discussed it, came to the logical conclusion that it would be appropriate to have defined criteria for guidelines to be followed. And this benefits not only the city, and benefits the senior planner and the CDD person, who it is now in the form of Sandy, or who it may be in the future. Because if Sandy makes a decision based upon something that is subjective in her mind, based upon what her impression of, something that's insubstantial as far as a modification goes, the next CDD person may not have the same perspective. And so then you have a conflict, you have appeals, you have issues, that there's not a specific guideline. So the main criteria that when you folks take this into consideration this evening to cast your vote is that the... Your appointed commissioners came to the conclusion that it serves the city, it serves the developer, it serves the senior planner, and the CDD, all to have an established written criteria. And, you know, I think that it's something that's appropriate. You know, we all saw ARC work over the last, you know, continuum of a period of time, and worked effectively, and in an effort to go with what your folks' goals are, to streamline this process. It wouldn't take... There's nothing on the board right now in terms of planning. There's no proposals in by any developers or in that are pending that another 30 days or 45 days...
Your time's up.
Okay. Could be given to establish this criteria as proposed by... And recommended to you tonight by your planning department.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there other comments? Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak before we go to the council?
Mayor, council members, Mike Guthridge, General Park Company. Been building here in the city of Galt for since 1980. Been building for 45 years. As you know, our company is one of the... Probably the only company in the present, anyway, that makes a lot of changes in their houses. We've been doing this for 45 years. I would say that probably 90% of our houses have changes, from maybe minor of taking one bedroom out and making a big master bedroom, to changing the kitchen from the front to the back. Under this proposal, I see that we would have to come back for any little detail. Now, how we do it is we bring in a set of plans that's already been redrawn, because almost all our plans now under the new code has to be redrawn. But I feel like very strongly that we must have the right to change what we want to do, like I'm saying, many things that we do within the house themselves. Now, we're coming back, and we're going to start a house, we hope, here in the next 30 to 60 days, because we need to do something with our 36 lots that we got down there in Creekside to Unit 2. Of that, we are going to ask for a change in the size of the house. As you know, the two models we have over there are 2,600 and over 3,000 feet. We're trying to come into a house because with what the... What's going on in the economy and so on, we figure we're going to have to be in that 1,800-foot range. Now, 1,800-foot, there are 1,800-foot houses in the subdivision that is just west of us, and they are beyond some of our houses that we built in there in the 90s when we bought 13 lots. So I really feel strongly about us having the opportunity, because if the three models we come up with that don't work, I don't want to have to come back in front of the council every time we have to maybe make a change on a house that I feel like we have a pretty good idea what we've been doing in the last 45 years. Is there any questions?
I do have a question. So Sandy, in regards to his comment about downsizing his square footage on the house, does that stay within the requirements of the zone, or is that an issue at all?
Yeah. Zoning does not have a minimum house size. It only addresses your lots, your coverage, and your setbacks, and your height.
Okay.
So his current approved ARC in Creekside would not allow an 1,800-square-foot home. But with the amendments tonight, he could come back and get a revised ARC.
Okay. Were there any other comments?
I have a couple of comments. Vice Mayor Powers. Having been on ARC and the Planning Commission, there are some pros and cons that I see about both of these things. I agree with what some of our constituents have said about the insubstantial modifications. I know that there's been some that have been really off the wall to me on the ARC, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the hot spot there. And with the Planning Commission, you know, that is their job, and I don't... I think that you need the majority vote on that, and a lot of things don't need to come back... Need to stay with the Planning Commission, and combining the ARC with the Planning Commission is a really good idea.
Councilwoman Shelton, did you want to comment?
Yes, I would, thank you. Ms. Keighley, on 1824030 section, you have the bottom of that paragraph about specific design guidelines for ARC, so developers will know in advance of expected their home designs. That's what we're trying to do, is make sure we know what we're going to be putting in there. Is that correct?
Right now, basically, there's the four objectives that I had on the slide.
Right.
That's the only guidance to a builder as to what the city's looking for. So, you know, staff feels bad when we have to try and meet with them and help them through that process, and know that these would go to the Planning Commission and have a good chance of getting approved or not. So we would recommend that... That's not part of tonight's presentation, but that'll be sort of phase two. We would actually say that let's come back and establish some design guideline standards so that there is at least a baseline level, and we know where that bar is set.
Okay.
Well, I don't see why we should vote on it tonight if we need to come back with guidelines on it. I... I'm not going to vote on anything and say come back later with the guidelines. I think that it should be in the report that we vote on.
And that's most part of my issue.
What we were trying to do with tonight's amendment is streamline the current process, so somebody like Mike Guthridge, who actually wants to start building, wouldn't have to go through the rezon process and the cost of that, and he'd have a smoother process. The current process of going to the Planning Commission is actually already in the code. It's just mostly these minor amendments we had tonight, other than the insubstantial modifications and the voting, just are clarifying various things. The main issue is going back on those half-built subdivisions that we have throughout the city, including River Oaks 3, Creekside 4, some of those, and giving them the same competitive advantage, letting them go through the same process instead of a whole rezon, a $6,000 application fee, two public hearings, and all that additional process. They would just be able to go through the current process of the Planning Commission.
Okay. And I also have to agree with Vice Mayor Powers on the three-fifths vote to majority vote. I agree. We appoint people to those commissions for a reason, because we feel they're going to be responsible, and they're going to be there. I don't know how many times we've had where we barely had a quorum at these Planning Commission meetings, because I haven't heard... Do you know if we had a problem with having a quorum with the Planning Commission?
At our last meeting, we did.
Well, I was on it for eight years, and we didn't have that many problems.
Yeah. I don't know how often it is. It does happen, just at our last Planning Commission meeting, we only had two members that showed up.
Okay.
Two?
Two.
At the workshop.
No. So I couldn't... I could not support that portion of the section change. I think it should stay as is, because I think we need to have as much input as far as the Planning Commission is concerned, if possible, instead of cutting that down. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shelton?
When do you think that we would be able to sit down and come to the agreement of the guidelines in the near future? Do you have a projection date where we could get planning and council?
My thought was, if we have a joint workshop with City Council and Planning Commission on just sort of the direction to staff on how you want to proceed with... There's some different options we could go with for design guidelines. And staff will do some research and come up with a report and bring it back to a joint workshop. At that point, we would recommend that maybe you defer it to the Planning Commission to have a series of workshops to work on the actual guidelines based on that direction, and then we'd bring them back for approval. I would probably say, given current workload, we'd ask for three months or so to come back with the workshop.
Oh.
We could do it quicker, but...
Well, okay. If we... What is the workshop going to be? If we got to... I don't understand, because Mike's making faces back there. Is that going to put... If we do this, is this going to put him out for three months?
No. Mike's proceeding to the June 14th Planning Commission under the current process, assuming tonight's amendments are approved.
Okay. But if we just take out the vote part, and I don't know how the other three feel on it, so I'm not sure, how are the insubstantial modifications? That's not going to make for anybody being held up for three months, is it?
No. The insubstantial modifications would, you know, it would require going back to the Planning Commission, if that is council's desire. We would probably work with Mike and the Planning Commission to have him include a number of options with the approved ARC, to sort of address any possible modifications that he might be thinking of in the future, so they approve them all at once, so it's not an insubstantial modification from his approved ARC, but...
I'm having a hard time understanding what an insubstantial modification is. I mean, you put a... Can you send examples?
What Mr. Guthridge is proposing doesn't really have anything to do with, at this point, the insubstantial modifications. He's going through the full boat, the... He's, I think, looking forward to the modifications that are being presented tonight, because it'll streamline his process. If the council wants to make the changes to the three-fifths vote, as well as the insubstantial modifications, to make that contingent on the design guidelines being established, that's not going to have any real impact on Mr. Guthridge's development or any other subdivision that wants to come through and make some major changes. It would have if they want to make minor, kind of the insubstantial modifications. But I think there's time to work through those issues through the design guideline process. So I think the only thing that the council would do tonight that would have a major impact on current developers wanting to go through the process if you just didn't take any action tonight.
And these meetings are always open to the public, correct? For input?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Curt, sorry.
I almost threw a pin. Felt like it. Okay, two questions. Number one, you're telling me to vote on something that I have no idea what I'm going to be doing, correct, as far as the insubstantial modifications? Yes?
What we're referring to is insubstantial modifications. When a developer comes before the Planning Commission or City Council and says, here's what I'm going to build, they show you a picture of a front elevation and a floor plan. If somebody like Mr. Guthridge, who tends to allow his clients to customize their homes a little bit, if they come in and decide, I want the kitchen in the back, and I want a master bedroom up front, and that means that I also want you to change the window and add a door up front, that's the kind of insubstantial modification. But if it's not exactly what you showed the Planning Commission or City Council as your elevation, I would be able to either make the decision that that doesn't need to go back through the hearing process, that's no big deal, or it would have to go back through the hearing process.
So it's an internal portion of the building, nothing aesthetically on the outside of the buildings, would you tell me?
Typically, it is something exterior.
Minor changes. Making the window a little bit bigger.
Changes the window design or the...
I'm going to sound like a broken record here. I kind of agree... I agree with the other council members on two things. Number one, we need defined actions as to what insubstantial modifications are, number one. Number two, we need a three-fifths vote. And I'm not going to point this at you, because it's responsibility of the five of us up here, but if we have representatives on the Planning Commission not showing up to meetings when they're supposed to, we need to replace them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's from the quiet one.
It irritates me. That's right.
And I think we are provided with attendance records, so we know.
And I don't think it's necessarily been an issue, but it can be if you have a developer that comes to the May Planning Commission meeting, and there's not a quorum, they're now kind of pushed to the June meeting, so it costs them time and money.
Then we find a time, make a special meeting. Has Mrs. Keighley brought up...
Keighley.
Keighley. Has she brought up? Council does it. They're not above us, let's do it.
Because it is a notice public hearing, if you don't continue it to a date certain, which a lot of times at that time, you don't know if the room's available, if everybody's available, then you have to renotice it, so there's additional costs, but that can be done.
Well, make the room available. I mean, it's a little more important.
Meet out on the grass.
Wherever we need to. We've got the little incentive right there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more comments, or is there any suggested... Okay, why don't you read the recommended action, please?
Okay. We have three different recommendations. Number one, introduce an ordinance amending certain provisions of Chapter 18.08 and 18.52 of the municipal code regarding establishment of zoning districts and permit procedures, respectively, and also amending the official Galt zoning map to reflect the changes.
Okay. Stop. Okay. Having read that... Having read that, what out of all of the procedure that is in that part, part number one, or, yeah?
Those are mostly the minor cleanup stuff. It doesn't really affect any of the...
Any of the things that you had on there.
Any of the procedures tonight, doesn't affect the substantial modifications or the vote.
Okay, go to the next one then.
Okay.
Number two, introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 18.24 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding combining zoning district regulations and specific plans with determination regarding the planning commission's recommended revision.
What? Okay, Sandy.
From what I'm hearing tonight, it sounds like that I would recommend that you approve that ordinance with the modifications to keep the three-fifths voting requirement as it is, and to go with the planning commission's recommended revision about insubstantial modifications, which is that that will be defined at a, at a later date. So in the interim, we would process them all through the planning commission. There would be no determination by staff.
Okay, that's an explanation on number two.
Okay, and number three, introduce an ordinance rescinding or otherwise modifying conditions of rezoning ordinance approval relating to the architectural review procedures and requirements for new single-family homes imposed on identified residential developments noted in the staff report.
That goes back to those 12 subdivisions and basically says, you guys play by the same rules as everybody else now. All the prior cumbersome conditions about this constitutes a rezon go away, and they just basically go to the planning commission for an ARC.
Okay. Is everybody clear?
Yes, ma'am.
Now then, let me ask the attorney, can, do we take each one of these individually and vote on them, or?
Yes, you should take them individually so we're clear what we're doing.
Okay, did you read number four? There's only three.
I think number four was the planning commission staff report you might be referencing. That's not for the council.
Okay. Okay, are we ready for the vote, or for the motion? Excuse me. Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, Mayor and council members, I wanna make sure, how, I wanna make sure I'm clear on this, that if I make a change in this house that we're gonna be coming up with here in thirty to sixty days, I would have to go back to the planning commission if I wanted to move the wall four inches or do anything like that?
Sandy, I see you reaching.
Uh, I am working with the planner who's writing your staff report right now to try and, and work some language in there, and we'll probably be coming back to you for some ranges on what the planning commission would approve. You can request that interior modifications, uh, be allowed at that ARC meeting. So if they included in their ARC approval, then it wouldn't be an insubstantial modification later on. Does that make sense?
That sounds like something...
If they included in their motion that you can change the inside without changing the exterior floor plan or elevation, then you could, you could do that.
You can lean on, excuse me, it's a minute, sir.
Uh, if the planning commission, when they review his ARC in June...
It sounds like that's something that you and Sandy could discuss privately?
I can understand it, but I'm, I just, I just wanna make sure of what the council's gonna say, 'cause that's the deciding vote here. I gotta make sure that I'm gonna have the opportunity to make some changes in this house that we're coming up with, because, uh, as you know, things have been pretty tough for us home builders, and I gotta make sure that I'm gonna, when I go out there and spend that $200,000, $300,000, I'm, I, I got a pretty good handle on, that I can do this without having a, a problem.
What kind of problem?
Well, I'm making these changes I'm talking about. I got a plan that I'm gonna show to the planning commission, so what if I wanna change the window in the bathroom from, from 4020 to 2040, or something like that? Am I, every little thing, I'm gonna have to come back to the planning commission before I can get the set of plans and go in and build the house?
It depends on how we present it to the planning commission and what their, their approval includes. So I'm gonna, I'll work with you on that staff report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mister, excuse me, real quick, Mr. Guttridge, you were saying something about having to move, are you talking about moving the foundation four inches one way or another? I mean, could you explain a little bit?
Well, you know, in our, in our houses, like I said before, out of the $3,000, $4,000 we've built, we've probably ninety percent of them made changes, from, from front to back, changing the, uh, a five-bedroom to a two-bedroom, this, that, and the other, within the modifications of what the size of the house is, 2,000 feet, 3,000, whatever it is. So what I'm saying is, I'd still like to be able to do that in the houses that we've built, that we've been building for forty-five years. The same type of thing. We have never had any complications. We've done it, 'cause they say now, we used to be honest, we could put it on a piece of paper and take it over to the, the county of Sacramento, and they said, well, fine. Now that's twenty years ago, or twenty-five years ago. Today, we have a full set of plans, uh, gone by an architect, engineered, and so on and so forth. So, but I still gotta have the opportunity to make some minor changes within the house. That's what, that's what sells our product over these years.
Well, the key word was minor, is that correct? Nothing major, is that, is that correct? I mean, aesthetically, you're not talking about, uh, uh, adding additional room to a 5,000 square foot home?
No.
Okay.
No. No. It would be B in the G signs at, at this point. And then naturally, the other thing is, if these models don't go, then I'm gonna have to probably have to come back to the planning commission, it sounds like, and bring that plan back and pay this, well, it's gonna cost me over $1,000 every time I do a plan, because you gotta send out a 500-foot radius of the area, and that costs money, and $600, so you got $1,000 tied up. Uh, but that's just one of those things. But at least I wish I could have the opportunity to make the changes within the house.
Well, Sandy, then, I'm sorry, would, would you just say that insubstantial modifications are usually just basically the, um, layout of the house, within the four walls and...
The way the term insubstantial modifications is used is it's to the approved ARC. So if his approved ARC includes that he's allowed to change the interior of the home without having to come back to them, then there wouldn't be no need for the insubstantial modifications later on. So it just kinda depends on how all-encompassing the approval is from the planning commission and how much information Mike provides them upfront on options that he might wanna use.
So those are some...
Make sure that those get included.
Those are some of those guidelines you're talking about bringing back then, is that, is that correct, of the ARC?
Our design guidelines would be more just basic for a, for a home builder. This is just Mike's proposal that he's putting forward. We just may, need to make sure that that proposal is very comprehensive and that the planning commission's acting on the whole thing.
Well, it doesn't sound like to me that Mike wants to make any real big, major changes, and I don't wanna make things more difficult for him.
The, the thing I gotta point out to you, in, in the forty-five years, we've probably made fifteen to twenty thousand changes within the houses we've done, as they say. So we made a, we've made, when you walk into a house, it might look completely different than the model home that we've built. And people like, like that idea of being able to do that.
Yeah.
That's why, as I said, that's why we've been able to sell our product over these years.
Well, but you haven't changed a 5,000 square foot house to a $7,000...
No.
Seven thousand.
No, 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 no.
That's, that's what I'm concerned, I just don't wanna be able to have the, have a 5,000, like you said, 5,000 square foot house to a 7,000 per square house, unless somebody's taking a look at it.
No. No.
And I agree with Mike, I, I, I don't think anything he wants to do is anything...
All right, uh, you know, I think it's important to hear from the gentlemen out there, even though this is a little bit out of what we normally do, because I feel like the council members are not clear in their own minds what this is about, and it does help to hear this discussion. So if you would like to come up one more time, we'll listen.
I'll be real brief. In all deference to Mr. Guttridge's experience and professionalism and, and his years of built home building and stuff, um, our concerns with the architectural review issue are not to impede his ability to make modifications in his house. He's, his reputation has been based upon the ability for him to make these modifications, to cus- to make these homes semi-customs to his market and his, his customers, and he's done that, you know, continuously and successfully from, you know, Elk Grove all the way back down here to Galt and stuff. It's not a, it's not an, an issue of trying to impede him, but the purpose of having those defined insubstantial modification criteria written out was just demonstrated to you by Mr. Guttridge. He doesn't know what insufficient modifications are either. And, you know, the very fact that he has concerns and, and questions about what he's going to be allowed to do and everything, these guidelines that would be provided to him gives him all that stuff upfront, so that when his plans come forward, his planners have already gone ahead and made it in, in conjunction with the criteria that you folks will be voting on at some point and the planning commission has established for him. It doesn't leave room for subjective determinations or, you know, meetings between him and her, him and Sandy to make some sort of a, uh, come to some consensus. Everything that Mr. Guttridge plans on doing now, he's taking his home size down from a 2,000-plus square foot home to an 1,800-square-foot home, and that's not an insubstantial modification. And my discussions with planning already have already defined that those don't, are not insubstantial modifications, those still require him to go through the original ARC process. So the insubstantial modification issue is just something that we would respectfully ask, that you folks have already started discussing it and leaning towards making that an established criteria and that you follow through with that, so that it gives both, you know, the, the community and it gives the builders the confidence as to what they're doing and what's going to take place, and that he knows he can put in a, a different type of window or different sized window without any other process slowing him down or it costing him more money. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Our next planning commission meeting's coming up on the 14th. City Attorney.
Can council give them directive that their primary goal at that next meeting is to come up with some type of definitive answer on this?
A, a definitive answer as to what the design guy, or, excuse me, the insubstantial modifications are here?
Correct.
You can give that, that direction if you like. What it sounds like the council's leaning towards is going with the planning commission's recommendation, that the planning commission finds what insubstantial modifications are. And I think, if I'm hearing you right, Councilmember Cruz, you would like them to take up that issue on the 14th.
Absolutely.
Now, I certainly can guarantee that they're gonna reach resolution on that, but you, if you wanna give a directive that that's what you want them to do, you can do that.
City Manager, did you have a comment?
Well, if we're not, we're not gonna be prepared to really discuss in any detail the design guidelines with the planning commission on the 14th, but we can certainly talk to them about the need to do that and what the council's direction was, and that we'll start working on it this summer, 'cause it's gonna take a lot of, uh, public meetings and hearings. It's a, it's a big undertaking to establish design guidelines. It's something that takes, um, planning commission and council. Not a, a small thing you can just...
We are looking at at least three months, I would guess.
So, um, certainly we'll start to work towards that in the best way that we can. And I think the direction you're taking tonight is, is certainly appropriate. Um, you can make the items number one and three, you can adopt as is, it looks like the direction of council, and then making changes to number two on the voting requirements and the insubstantial modifications that were done by the planning commission. I think that could address council's discussions and concerns this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, are we ready to, uh, to make a motion on this? Do we know of the council what we wanna do? Let's, let's look at item number one first and see, uh, if we're ready to hear a motion on that one. You can read it, council.
Introduce an ordinance amending certain provisions of chapter 18.08 and 18.52 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding establishment of zoning districts and permit procedures respectively, and also amending the official Galt zoning map to reflect the changes.
Okay, that, you've heard the first one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we do have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please. Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. That motion, that ordinance is passed unanimously.
The introduction of the ordinance, the ordinance won't be passed until the next meeting. Thank you.
That's what I meant.
I, I knew that.
Okay. Want me to read three? Uh, well, no.
Tackle two.
Let's tackle two and see what we, where we wanna go with it. So... Go read it. Please. The introduction.
Introduce an ordinance repealing and replacing chapter 18.24 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding combining zoning district regulations and specific plans with determination regarding the planning commission's recommended, recommended revision.
Okay, now you've heard that one read, and there was some, some concerns on that one. Do you want to discuss that or make specific changes? And I took, took some notes, one of the things on this one was the, uh, majority vote versus three, five.
Yeah.
And, uh, the other one, I believe, was going to the planning commission on the decision versus the...
Going with what the planning commission recommended.
Right.
Leaving the three-fifths vote the way it is currently, and then going with planning commission recommendation regarding insubstantial modifications. Everything else remains the same.
Regarding insubstantial modifications? Is that what you said?
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Shelton. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a couple of seconds. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Sorry.
Oh, wait a minute, do we need to reread that with the changes?
No, I, I assume that the motion incorporates the changes identified.
Okay. Okay. Now, ready for number three. Oh, vote. Excuse me. Roll call vote.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye, so that motion is, no, the introduction has, is passed with the modifications.
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, number three.
Number three. Introduce an ordinance rescinding or otherwise modifying conditions of rezoning ordinance approval relating to the architectural review procedures and requirements for new single-family homes imposed on identified residential developments noted in the staff report.
And I move to... You can make the motion, then we can discuss. Go ahead.
Okay, make the motion.
Okay, we have, uh, motion and, uh, second. Is there any other discussion on that one before we vote? Uh, now, on this one, I'm gonna make a comment on it. I was thinking this one said that the other subdivisions now will follow the new rules, not the old rules. Okay. Okay, that's the discussion, and we have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. So we have passed that introduction of the motion, of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance. Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Next item. Are you ready to read the next item? Oh, you are, you are, okay.
Next item, adoption of successor agency administrative budget for July 2012 through December 2012. Uh, thank you, this is the, before you, you have the recommended administrative budget for the city of Galt, serving in its capacity as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency of the city of Galt. Uh, it was prepared pursuant to the health and co- health and safety code. Uh, it covers the period of July 1st through December 31st. It includes just the general administrative costs of the successor agency related to support services, uh, for the oversight board, um, and the Department of Finance and county the, county auditor requirements associated with the oversight board. Um, any administrative or other costs that are directly associated with work on specific approved projects on the recognized obligation payment schedule are recoverable from, uh, approved projects on the recognized obligation payment schedule are recoverable from other fund sources. So, this admin budget is just for staff time, printing and duplicating, the meeting room, that sort of thing for the Oversight Board meetings, which are scheduled twice a month similar to City Council. Uh, the personnel section of the budget identifies full-time equivalent positions that represent estimated time which each designated staff person is expected to devote. Uh, the maintenance operations budget, based on, loosely on City Council's budget because you also have a two times a month meeting, but we obviously determined that printing and duplicating is less, that sort of thing, so we kind of modified it a bit there. So, exhibit A to the resolution includes the budget and we are recommending you approve it and we will forward it to the Oversight Board for their final approval.
Okay, are there any questions on this successor agency administrative budget?
To accept.
Second.
Sure, come on up.
We already have a motion on the floor.
We'd like, as public, we'd like to know how much this budget is and has the successor agency, the one in Sacramento, has that been formed?
Our local-
Now, excuse me for a second, is this testimony or are you going to give me, afford me the same privilege that you did, Mr. Bestridge, by answering my questions?
I would answer the question to best of my knowledge. Our local successor agency has been formed. I hope that answered your question. Our has been formed. I don't know about that one in Sacramento. Would you like to get the breakdown on the cost, not every line item, but-
Sure. The personnel that are typically associated with the Oversight Board duties are city manager, city attorney, finance director, clerk, an accounting manager, the principal planner, and then administrative support person. That six-month budget is $146,456. The maintenance and operation includes duplicating, phone equipment, software, auditing services, the facilities, the general building support, and consultant services for legal counsel and other. That subtotal was $62,589 for a total administrative budget of $209,045.
Okay, all right, we've read that. And this is also online, isn't it? If you want to review it in more detail, it is online at our city's webpage. Okay, is there any other discussion on this item? No? Okay, is there a motion?
I think you have a motion in the second tent.
Okay.
Councilmember Cruz and made the motion, Councilmember Singleton, second.
Thank you, thank you for keeping me online here. So, now we're ready for the vote.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
The motion is passed unanimously.
Go ahead, she wants to do the next one. City Manager's Office, 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Councils. My honor and privilege to present the city's recommended 2012 through 2017 Capital Improvement Program. Um, you see some images up on the screen, some of the projects that we currently have underway, some are under construction, the Central Interchange, Twin Cities Roundabouts, Central Galt Corridor projects, and we're going to go into some of those in a little bit more detail. What is a C I P, Capital Improvement Program? It's long-range capital planning document, includes budget appropriations for the two-year budget, allows us to phase projects, identify funding sources, set policy and identify future needs, also allows us to take advantage or apply for grants based on projects that we have coming up. What you have in front of you is a detailed five-year cost and revenue estimates. We also have projects that are beyond the five-year in order for us to adequately plan for those projects down the road. The C I P is updated annually. City hasn't always had a C I P, used to just be kind of year-to-year, we would add projects and we developed a formal C I P project about five years ago and we've updated there ever since and allows us to be really strategic in the way we plan for capital projects. And that's one of the reasons why you see some of, all the projects we have going on right now allows us to look forward and then identify where the funds are going to come from years in advance in order for us to systematically review that, prioritize things so that we don't spend money on one project only regret, oh, I wish we had saved it for this project down the road. We can look at the long-range plans, making sure that we're appropriately identifying and planning projects out several years. Uh, what you have in front of you tonight is a total of 79 total projects, a total project cost of $603 million. This isn't within the five-year timeframe, this is for the whole planning document. Um, planning, the C I P is, a lot of it is based on some of the master plans that the Council's adopted over the years, the traffic comprehensive improvement, Capital Improvement Program, water, sewer, storm drainage, all those programs that look out for the entire general plan build-out of the city, so it's not just looking at what we need now, it's looking at when the city builds out in the entire planning horizon, what those costs are going to be and identifies ways to do that. Within just the five-year timeframe, we've got total projects of $40.7 million and those have already, those have identified funding sources. We don't put projects in the five years unless we have identified funding sources for those projects. In the first year, fiscal year 2013, total of $20.3 million. The second year of the budget is $15.4 million and then the largest chunk is the 470, that's beyond, and some of those projects won't be needed for 20 years, but we still have them in there so we can appropriately plan for those. We've been active building projects over the last year. Anybody that drives through Galt knows we have some big projects going on right now and this doesn't have, the stuff is underway, this just, this has the stuff that was actually done and completed, or projects that we believe will be completed before the end of this fiscal year, so June 30th, so some of these are nearly complete or will be complete in the near future. You can see under Parks and Recreation, Walker Park, we had a big grand opening last summer, that was completed this year. Curly and Boulevard Meeting Landscape Project, we're nearing completion on that, there should be just a few minor pieces left to be done on that. Transportation, lot of pedestrian safety improvements, A Street Lincoln flashing crosswalks, Dead Men Gold's Curly and Flashing Crosswalk that's under construction right now, streetlight retrofit project, West Elmore widening near Walker Park for water and wastewater, several projects, Golden Heights Water Treatment Plant, well number three, that should, the new well should be online here in June, Monterey Bay Well and Golden Heights, the water treatment plant expansion, the same thing, some filter system rehabilitation, and then the big project was the wastewater treatment plant upgrade that was finally approved earlier this year. Progress on current projects that we have underway, under construction, obviously Central Interchange Project, Live Oak Lift Station and Force Main Project that the Council awarded that contract just recently, that'll be under construction here shortly. There's a number of other smaller projects that are underway as well. We have some pavement rehabilitation projects that the Council's already moved on, there's going to be another large pavement project at the next meeting and so there's quite a few things underway. Larger projects that are coming down the road or that are in design right now include the Roundabout Project, that's nearing completion of design, we're doing right-of-way on that, that should be under construction next spring. Water meter retrofit, staff's still working towards that. Fourth Street Parking Lot, open space improvements along the railroad property, that's under design as well as Central Galt, C Street Complete Streets Project, that's the project we were awarded a $2 million Saco grant for earlier this year. And then finally, the road required zones, the Council approved the next phase of that at the last, the Council meeting. This has chart broken down by different types of funding source. You can see the biggest one is charges for services, a lot of those are water, wastewater projects. We also have a fair amount of federal state money in there, that's the light blue pie slice on the left. Redevelopment is red and Measure A, which is transportation, developer fees, which is the yellow one, so it's very diversified portfolio as far as where the funding is coming from. Very, very small amount however, from general fund and I'll get into that in a second, there's actually almost no projects from the general fund or the Culture and Recreation Fund that's reliable to afford it. The projects that are in there are typically either grant-funded through C D B G or for the Pistol Range out of the wastewater treatment plant that's funded. The money comes in through the general fund and it's expensed out, but it's not a net impact to the city's general fund because it's used, we use revenue that we receive from people that use the range, particularly the Correctional Department. This is broken down by different categories of funding. You can see wastewater, transport wastewater and water, again, those are the two, two big ones, those make up about half of the total projects. Transportation is the other big one. Smaller pieces are parks and rec, general improvements, equipment, those are ones that we've, we don't have a lot of money for right now, discretionary funding that's kind of dried up, so we're moving forward with a lot of the other projects, but there's not a lot of money right now to do some of the other projects. Let's go through by category, some of the major projects, we're not, I'm not going to go through all the projects, Council can either stop me as we go in each category, if you have questions under the categories, we can address it then, or if you want me to just go through and then you have questions at the end, we can do that too, so feel free to interrupt me as we go through. Under general improvements, the significant changes, we did some changes, some mergers of projects, not a lot, a whole lot of new projects here, but the City Hall and Market Parking Lot improvements, we combined that into one parking lot improvement project. When we did the pavement management system program last year, they also analyzed the pavement condition of all the city-owned parking lots in the city and so we felt it was appropriate to have just one C I P project that addressed those, the rehabilitation. And you'll be seeing at the next Council meeting, we are recommending doing some pavement rehabilitation, particularly at the Galt Market in the next, as part of that upcoming project. Due to the loss of redevelopment funding, the Quiet Zone Project has been pushed out a little bit, we're going to be using C D B G funds largely to complete that as opposed to redevelopment funds, so you see that change. Um, we did remove the City Hall Generator Project, we now have sufficient portable generators that we are able to move around to different locations, so it will just require some modifications to the paneling at City Hall so that we can just connect, drive up and hook up the generator to City Hall and make that, make that functional. The other thing is the, we changed some of the name on one of these projects, the Fourth Street Parking Lot and Open Space Project has been titled U P R, Parking Lot Improvement Project, and we've just renamed it so that it's more appropriately reflected, it's not just parking, that we are doing some enhancements of the open space. Under Parks and Recreation, not a whole lot, unfortunately, we're not able to build a whole lot of parks right now, but we do have a lot of capital maintenance projects that we felt was necessary to at least put on the list, even if we don't have funding to do a lot of them right now. There are a lot of needs in various parks that need some rehabilitation, so we added this. There were a few other minor projects that were separate before, we had the Playground Resurfacing Replacement Project, Sports Complex Park Shading, Shade Structure Replacement, and we just rolled it up into one, one project, so that's what we're going to change, you see under Parks and Recreation. Transportation, one of the new projects we added is Marango Road pedestrian path from Elk Hills Drive to Magnum Drive Project, potential Safe Routes to Schools Project. This is something that came forward, recommendation from our Public Works Department. River Oaks subdivision is eventually, when they, when they start building again, will straighten out Marango Road, put curb gutter sidewalks in there, but until that happens, there's a gap, so people, students that come from Liberty Ranch High School have a hard time getting south on Marango Road, it's kind of a dangerous area, so we think it's a really good candidate for Safe Routes to Schools money, grant money. We need to do a little bit of work in order to get that project ready for the, for the grant funds, but that is something that's recommended here. Other significant changes include increased funding for the C Street Central Corridor Complete Streets Project, that's the $2 million grant award we received from Saco, so that's reflected in there. We also significantly increased the pavement rehabilitation project funding for fiscal year 13 and 14. We want to be a little bit more aggressive, we have some built-up funds that are available to do some of those, some of that work, and so we're preparing and planning for that, so you'll see some additional money in those projects. Under water, you're surprised to see the most changes in water and sewer because we just recently updated the master plans for water and sewer and so there's some new projects that have been created. And, and so what you see is two really different categories, you have capacity improvements, those are to accommodate future growth, where we're building new homes, you need to put in new pipes and add, expand facilities. The other one is maintenance projects, where you have old pipes, things that just are not working right, you'd go in and replace things, so we divided it because the funding source is different. For the maintenance project, it has to be funded out of current ratepayers, for the future, the expansion projects, those are funded entirely using developer fees, and so we have it divided separately so you can see exactly what's going on. We did put those two projects, most of that work is done beyond the five years and the intent is, we loaded all the projects that are identified in the master plan, those two projects by funding source, and then as we need to move forward and do some of those projects, we'll pull them out of the five-year or beyond the five-year and move them into their own individual projects, and so that's what you see under the Old Town Water Main Replacement, that's a project that was identified in the master plan, we're planning on doing that within the five years and so it's, now it's been created as its own project that will be moved forward within the five-year timeframe, and that's, that's the big one there. The other major project is to do a water treatment plant operation and maintenance manual, something that's been needed to be done for a while, it's a recommendation from our Utilities Superintendent. A couple other significant changes, the Cost Well and Water Treatment Facility Project moving forward to replace the aging Fumasi and Gateway Wells, and other councils seen this project a couple different times, we're looking at getting some state revolving fund loans to get that project moving. Other big emphasis is just being, placing an emphasis on facility maintenance and replacement to assure our residents have safe, clean, adequate water supply down the road. I think there hasn't been maybe enough, much emphasis in the past at doing that, we have a renewed emphasis, what you'll see in the operating side is really putting more staff at some of the routine maintenance, some of the deferred maintenance projects, we need to get back on those and just make sure, so that's what you see reflected in the C I P as well as the operating budget, just the need to keep up with our maintenance of our water lines, our sewer lines, our facilities, so that we're not depriving future residents of those, of those assets. Water, very similar situation here where you have the sewer improvement projects and the maintenance projects, so it's the capacity, the developer fees and then the service fees on the maintenance. Again, we pulled out a few projects early on, the Oberlin Way Trudy Way Wastewater Replacement Project is kind of a deferred maintenance project that we need to work on, so we've put that within the five years. And there's some work that we're recommending that needs to be done out of the wastewater treatment plant. One is to continue to do work on the reservoir, the pond repair replacement, just to keep those assets in good condition. The banks continue to erode and fill in the reservoir, so we need to put some, some rocks and some other things in there to prevent that from occurring, so there's some annual money in there to continue to maintain the infrastructure that we have out there. Some roadway improvements that we need to do, if you've driven out to the wastewater treatment plant, you know that some of the roadways are kind of rough, a lot of holes and eroding roadways and so forth, so we're recommending putting some annual money in there in order to keep up the roadways that we have out there. Couple of big projects that we have coming up on the horizon, one is the wastewater treatment plant arsenic and nitrogen treatment project, and that is a requirement of our permit that we have now, we were given five years to do those, and so we're right now undertaking the preliminary work as part of the facilities master plan that we're doing out there, that'll lead right into the design work for that project, and so that's a significant, another significant project that will be underway in the next several years in order to meet the deadlines imposed by the state for us. The other thing is the state and their requirements, the M P D S permit, it's a five-year cycle, so every five years you have to go through, the council members that were here last time we did it, know it's a very painful process and requires extensive testing and consultant work and other things in order to present our best case to the board about why we shouldn't have all of the requirements that they think we should have, and it's often a very big fight back and forth about them trying to impose more strict standards on us than we think are reasonable, and so it's a lot of back and forth, so there's a significant investment in staff time and consultant time in order to make sure we get the most favorable permit that we can possibly get in order to save taxpayer money or ratepayer money down the road. The final one here is the, similar to the water side, the wastewater treatment plant operations manual project, that's actual requirement of the new permit that we have. Drainage, only a couple of projects here, capacity improvements, again, this is based on a storm drainage master plan and the capital maintenance projects, and then equipment, just a skip loader is the only thing in here in the two-year budget cycle. I did go through the projects relatively quickly, I'm happy to go back. I would like to, you know, recognize staff for all the hard work they did in putting this together, it was a lot of time, a lot of people involved, Public Works spent countless hours working on putting these, these numbers together and Finance as well, coordinating all of, all of the efforts, so it's, it's quite an undertaking, but I'm proud of the work that everybody did to pull it together and so we can have a comprehensive document to look at where we're heading as a city, the improvements we need to make and then plan appropriately to make sure funding is there in order to do what needs to be done. And certainly be happy to hear from Council if there's other, you know, priorities, we're not asking you to adopt the document tonight, we're looking for is comment, feedback, any changes, things you'd like to see differently, certainly willing to address that and then take any public comment that might be out there that would like to look at any of these projects, and then we would plan on bringing this document back to the City Council next Council meeting for adoption.
Okay, so we're basically here just to review it and to accept it?
Review it, ask questions, provide direction to staff, if there's any changes you want to see made, and then provide us direction to come back to next meeting. Review it, ask questions, provide direction to staff, if there's any changes you want to see made, and then provide us direction to come back next meeting.
Any comments, Councilman Singleton?
I have a comment.
Singleton, Councilman Shelton?
I'd like to meet with Jason and discuss a little more why we removed the City Hall emergency generator. I know you said we had some portable generators, but I'm just concerned with that.
Yeah, it's been a project that we've delayed for actually several years and never had the money to be able to do it. It's, I think we had about seventy or eighty thousand dollars in the budget. And, you know, we knew we weren't going to be able to do it again in this next two-year budget cycle. And we were talking with Public Works, and they said, "Well, we have, you know, several portable generators. And with some modifications here at City Hall, we'll be able to hook it up and get it back in operation fairly quickly." One of the larger concerns earlier was that all of our radio communications, the 450 megahertz radio, all ran through City Hall. It's no longer the case. We now have a new 800 megahertz radio that runs out of the wastewater treatment plant. So our primary means of communication for PD are not relying on the connections here at City Hall. Certainly, there's some other things here that are important. It's important that we have, you know, connectivity here at City Hall. We do have battery backups on most of our systems, so that if the power does go down, we have about an hour in order to make the connection. So for example, power goes down, we've got some time to let Public Works get out here, hook up the trailer and the connections and make that before we lose complete power. So it's not the perfect system. We'd love to be able to, I think, put in a permanent generator here. We do have a permanent generator out at PD. There's a lot of requirements from the Air District when it comes to citing generators, which makes it problematic to put new generators in. So we just thought it was a lot of headache, a lot of cost, and we have another solution that we thought made sense. So that was kind of the thought process. Richard, I don't know if you have anything to add, or Aiden, anything to add to that?
I'm not going to volunteer. That's all right, I wanted you to explain that in a little more detail, but I'll still meet with you.
Anything else, Councilman Shelton? Councilman Cruz? I think you have something to say, Councilman Singleton?
I have a question, I guess you didn't hear me.
Sure, go ahead.
What's a skip loader? I have no idea what that is.
You've got to get one.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
What are you doing way back there, Aiden?
Make Aiden come over. Like a payload or type of? Okay.
It's not a toy for you, Councilman Singleton.
I just wanted to know ahead of time, something I could play with.
Okay.
I do have a few more questions.
Go ahead.
You know, I don't want to sound ignorant up here, but these are questions that I think some people out in the public may be asking themselves, so I'm going to ask them anyway.
Some of us too, probably.
I need to know, what's a water valve exercise program truck?
A water valve program exercise truck is a piece of equipment that allows you to go out and operate water valves quickly with a, generally with a single person on a pickup or a trailer-mounted unit, depending on how it's purchased. We did put that in the, I think it's in the third year of the five-year budget, it's not actually in the next two years. Because frankly, buying the piece of equipment is the easy part of doing that kind of a program. The real cost isn't coming up with the staff time to actually do it. Because obviously, if you don't use the piece of equipment, you wasted your money on it. And the issue is that water valves really should be turned on and off every few years. And there's a, because they don't work when you go to need them. And I had this experience in my previous job where there were a number of areas in town where they didn't want to turn valves because it was a good chance they would break it. And when you break an old valve, you need to go out and turn off a number of other valves to isolate that section of main. And I think Galt system is young enough that you could probably start a program before it gets to that point of being too late. And it is a good thing to do, but the real question is coming up with staff time to do it. Another reason for doing that kind of a program is that you often find valves that are closed, that shouldn't be closed. And so it's an area that, you know, needs to be looked at.
Okay, another one is, what type of upgrades are planned for streetlights?
With streetlights, we have submitted another grant application similar to the one that we received from the Energy Commission last go-around. And it's really just adding more LEDs, replacing lights with LEDs. And that project is only funded if we get the grant.
Okay, you sound like you're getting a third degree.
Oh, that's correct.
Made for it to sound like that, but like I said, these are questions that concerns, might be wanting to know. In here is mentioned about the water meter retrofitting, what are we talking about, what's planned there?
That, I am embarrassed to say, has not moved along as far as it should have. Several years ago, the council approved what was called Phase One of the program, as you, I'm sure you're aware. For the public benefit, you know, there is a state requirement now that we install meters on everybody. There's a deadline sometime in 2025. However, there was a category of homes built since 1992, they had to have been installed by, I think, 2010. The county, Department of City adopted a program to move forward on those post-1992 locations. And the project has not moved forward for a variety of reasons that I need to go into now. But it is something that I've been looking at. I hope to, you know, my remaining, hopefully remaining short time here to get something back to the council on that. What's in the budget is the amount of money that we've already collected to do the post-1992 services. Yeah, and if I could take a minute, I did want to comment that, you know, I started here just at the end of October. And not only did I not expect to be here now, I really didn't expect to be going through the budget process. And so I have been playing catch-up all the way through the process and still am playing catch-up on a number of areas. And so if there's deficiencies in the budget for Public Works, I truly apologize for that. And this is an area that I just really wasn't expecting to get into at the level that I have been. I do want to also acknowledge the staff we have in the back here, Aiden, Gwen Owens, and Mark Clarkson, who has all of two weeks on me in terms of seniority here, but they've all done a fabulous job. Bill Forrest from Engineering is back there also, put in a lot of work on this. And I also need to thank Finance, her staff from Finance for being so patient with me. And I also need to acknowledge the city manager's role in the budget. I've gone through lots of budgets in my time. And I've rarely come across the budget person, whether it's the deputy manager or the city manager, pay as much attention to the details and have a grasp of what's going on as I've seen with Mr. Berman. So you've got a good budget, and I say that the weaknesses are at my end, so I just wanted to point that out.
Well, let me commend you on for, you're not planning on being in here and for the short term, you have been doing a good job, and your staff. You've got to really give the staff a big hand because they're doing a great job. Just one more question, this is for the PD. I know that I was looking at the budget, do we, or city manager? Do we have anything budgeted for K-9 training? We have two K-9 dogs still, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do we have any kind of budgeting for continuing education and training for these K-9s?
We can get into that, I think, with the operating budget, which we're going to do next. But I don't know if the chief, if you have any information that you can share with Councilmember Singleton right now?
We're actually members of the K-9 Association, and a lot of our training is coming through that association at no cost to us. That association does fundraising, and in doing so, they put it back out to all the different agencies that are part of it. That's all I've got.
We'll be going to the budget shortly. Okay, any other questions from anybody? Now, the action on this is to receive it, do we need to have a consensus to receive it? Or can we just say, "We've received it"? Okay, we have received it.
There's no further direction, then we'll bring this document back at the next meeting for council adoption.
Thank you all, I appreciate it.
And I think we all, the whole council does want to acknowledge, along with the city manager, all the hard work that's been put into this. And the fact that we have a blueprint of what we think our priorities are, and we thank you all for your work. Now, let's get to the fun part, the budget. Do we need to read the budget?
2012 through 2014 by annual budget.
Okay. My pleasure to present the recommended operating budget for the next two fiscal years. Let me talk briefly, just kind of an overview. And in the budget document, divided into a lot of different sections, I know it's a big document, it is available. Both the CIP and the operating budget are available on the city's website, so members of the public can go and take a look to see what's on there. At the beginning of each document, I put together a transmittal memo to the city council about the highlights of the budget, including, in addition to the major program changes or highlights in the transmittal letter, each department has their own, what we call the budget narrative, that talks about, you know, what each department does, and then any major changes, whether it's personnel, operations, other things that we're recommending that the council needs to take note of. If it says no recommended changes, then it's just kind of a status quo budget, we're not really making any significant changes one way or the other. I do want to, you know, comment, really my presentation is going to focus on the transmittal letter and the major changes. I'm not planning on going through each department line by line. But again, if the council has questions in any areas, we go through this afterwards, we can go through each department. Or if the mayor wants to do that, you can certainly do that. But that was not my intention in presenting this, is just to highlight, really focus on the major changes and then let you as the council or the members of the community, if there's questions out there, we can go through individual items. So that's the intent.
That'll be fine, and we've had this three views, so if we have questions, it'll be easy for us to ask you to go back to them.
Okay, so now the council, the community, everybody's aware that the state's been, we've had lots of budget challenges. The economy's really been struggling, Galt as an organization, the city has not been immune from the effects of the economy. We have made a number of cost-cutting measures over the last several years, which I'll get to in a second. We're looking at this as kind of operating under a new normal, that we're not anticipating a major shot in the arm or anything that's going to get us all of a sudden back to where we were six or seven years ago, that we're focusing on improving the organization, improving how we deliver services, to be more efficient, more effective, to make better use of the taxpayer dollars. And so we're looking at as an opportunity to improve ourselves. And we always look to do that, and this, the economy has, I think, forced us to do that. And I think the organization has come through very well, and I'm proud of where we are today. And the services that we deliver, focusing on customer service, highest value and bang for the buck, just being aware of what it is the community wants, working with the council to set strategic goals and objectives and priorities and where we should, we have a limited amount of resources, where we should be placing those resources, has really been a rewarding and valuable experience for me and I know the council and staff. We've made a number of changes organizationally. We've been in the process of modernizing the city of Galt, being a more professional organization. You know, I don't want to disparage, you know, previous years or decades, but we're kind of emerging as a sleepy rural town to one that can hold its own against any city in the region and compete effectively and to make sure that our quality of life is second to none and that we provide the highest level of quality services we can to the community. We can't always do everything we want with the resources that we have, but we're doing our best to deliver the services that we can to the public. We have been, as outlined in the CIP, undertaking an aggressive infrastructure building program. We're really trying to get ourselves ready for the next phase of whatever lies in front of us with the economy. We don't want to be left behind. We know there's opportunities in the future, and so as evidenced by some of the projects we have, we are preparing the community to take advantage and to just increase the quality of life of our residents down the road. We don't want to be certainly left behind or miss opportunities that may have been there if we hadn't been ready and prepared to take advantage of those. So I appreciate the council's vision and foresight to get ourselves in a position where we are ready to do that. And so one of the main things we've been focusing on is economic development, preserving our financial stability, maintaining the reserves that we have. We don't get ourselves in a situation where we're overspending, where we're getting ourselves into debt. We're focusing on bringing in jobs, bringing in economic development projects and doing things in the right way. And that's where we've been placing our resources, and I think it's going to pay dividends in the future. And you look at some of the projects we've had going on, some of the programs we've done in the worst economy that anybody can remember. I think it's quite an accomplishment to see where we've come, and I'm excited to see where we're going to be heading over the next several years. One of the things, even though it's been difficult, I think it's been a positive thing, is that we've stayed ahead of the curve as far as the downturn in the economy. We've made cuts early on, so we didn't have to make some of the more severe cuts later on. Here's just like an example, some of the things we have had to do that have been, some of them have been more painful than others. We have had layoffs, we've had furloughs, we continue to have furloughs. Our employees have not had cost of living adjustments since 2009. We continue to have sixteen frozen positions. Our employees are now paying more into their PERS retirement. We've reduced maintenance and operations budgets, we've reduced overtime budgets, we've reduced a lot of things that we used to be doing and we're no longer able to do. So we've made some tough choices over the last several years, all with kind of declining revenues and, you know, expenditures. Even though we've cut a lot of costs, some expenditures keep going up, things that are really out of our control as far as healthcare costs continue to rise, PERS, retirement. Those things that outside agencies affect us, some of the biggest impacts we've had have been no fault of our own. Their state that's coming in and eliminating redevelopment agencies, and I'll talk about the impacts of that, other things that the state's done over the last several years. And we still have that fear down the road, not very far down the road, as the state looks to grapple with its own budget challenges this year, what other impact is going to come that's going to be against the city of Galt. And so there's still a lot of unknowns and uncertainty out there, and so we're trying to prepare ourselves to deal with anything that we might encounter in the future. We've done a good job of reducing the deficit that we had. Just a couple of years ago, we were facing million-dollar-plus deficits. There is still a projected deficit in the next two years. It is declining, next year, we're estimating it's going to be about $322,000. The year after that, it's about $140,000. The reason that we think it's going to get better in the second year is we're expecting Walmart to break ground later this summer and then be open next summer. So hopefully that will materialize and that'll help us with our budget situation. If that doesn't happen, then that's, it will leave a hole in the budget in the second year. Our reserves remain fully funded at a healthy level, still down from where they were at the peak. They were about $9 million at the peak, but certainly at a healthy level right now, at about $7.5 and $7.3 million that I believe we can continue to maintain and ride out the economy as long as we need to. This just shows you where we've been as far as our reserves. You can see where we peaked back in 2007, and then we had some years where we were taking into that, dipping into that reserve before we made some of the larger changes when it comes to layoffs and furloughs and things. And then since then, we've kind of stabilized it. And you can actually see in the current year, it's going up a little bit. And the reason it's going up is because we've had some cost savings in the current year. We've had a number of vacant positions in different departments. When we adopted the budget last year, we didn't have the employment agreement, so we didn't have the furloughs. We didn't have the cost sharing with PERS, we didn't have some of those things in effect. Those things have been adopted since last budget, and so you can see that it's kind of, it's just kind of flatlined right now over the last several years. And I went back two years and looked at the budget we presented to the council back then to see, just do a snapshot comparison and see where we were and what we've done, all the changes we've made over the last two years to stabilize this, and so we do have kind of a flatline. This is the budget that we presented to council just two years ago. And you can see the steady decline in reserves, if we hadn't done anything, where we would be. And that's showing, you know, a little over a $5 million reserve at that time. And that was just, that was just two years ago. So even though things are not great right now, they're certainly better than they could have been. And what we, if we hadn't made the difficult decisions, where we could be right now. And so I'm proud of what the council did and what our staff, staff has really been partners with the city in this in order to make the changes. Because most of the difficult decisions were a result of concessions, of things that the city employees came to the table and said, "We're willing to help to balance the city's budget." And so we're in a better position financially as a result and position ourselves better going forward. That kind of sets the overview of where we are. I do want to go into some detail on our revenues and our expenditures. And again, I won't go through all of the line, I have not anywhere near it because it's a very comprehensive, large budget. But just look at some of the big items that people talk about the most, property taxes. Actually, we think we've kind of hit the bottom on this, and we're going to start to level out, and then we're hoping- and then we're hoping in the second year that Walmart will come in and that'll provide a boost to us in, in property taxes. You see, in, you know, the first year, it's going to increase modestly by twenty-six thousand, and the second year, it will go up to about seventy-two thousand. So our total property taxes would be about three point five nine million dollars. Sales tax, again, we've had a decent year with sales tax, the numbers are, are up over the prior year. We're, we're estimating then the, the sales tax to continue to go up modestly over the next couple of years. Next year, slightly by, by three thousand dollars, gain a fifty-one thousand dollars. But the second year, when Walmart comes in, you can see an increase of almost four hundred thousand dollars, so that's a significant in, in increase and impact. If that does not materialize for whatever reason, it will leave definitely a hole in the budget that would be difficult to fill otherwise. Total estimated sales tax for the city, in the first year, the budget is one point six million dollars, in the second year is two million dollars. You can see four hundred thousand dollars is a significant chunk of the sales tax that we bring in for the city. Interest income, we've highlighted this to the city, I know when Sean Farrell comes and makes his presentation to council about the interest earnings, it's always a, not a very good news. Not too long ago, you know, cities were earning, I don't know, six, seven, five, I mean, how long has it been? I know since, since we've had those types of returns, it's been a while, and it's slowly been decreasing, and this year is the worst it's ever been, and next year will probably be even worse than that. So you can see we're projecting less than one percent interest return on investment next year. So, and that means, it, it means a lot of money, citywide interest revenue is five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So if you can imagine, that's less than one percent, if we were bringing in five percent interest, it's five times the amount of interest, it means, it means big dollars to the city, and so when our interest rates are so low, it just, it hurts, and it compounds the problems that we're having. I understand the interest rates are kept low to spur and stimulate other parts of the economy, but not stimulating the city's bottom line right now when we have those low interest rates. This is a, a chart and some numbers on general fund revenues. General fund estimate, estimates for the current year are about seven point six million, expected to slightly decline next year at seven point five, and then increase again to seven point eight in the second year. And there are some one-time increases in there, there's some C2BG funds, things that really sort of skew the numbers a little bit, and so I asked finance to put together a chart that took out the one-time fluctuations in revenues and just look at, okay, if we didn't have those ups and downs, what would we look like? And you can see we've got a little bit of a roller coaster right here, where we went really up, up, up in the mid-two thousands, and then we've come down, and we're kind of slowly starting to creep back up, especially in that second year, you can see where it goes back up, and that's, that's largely due to the Walmart project coming in. We've kind of hit the bottom, we think, we hope, and we're going to start a slow, slow rise in, in the future. Other significant revenues we have is Measure R, those continue to exceed our projections, our estimates, those, those are very robust. That, a lot of it is accounted for, we, most of it's in, in city sales, when you go shopping in Galt, a half cent goes to Measure R, but a lot of it is stuff that people shop for outside. You buy a car, and you get charged the city of Galt rate, and that sales tax, that, just that half cent, not any of the other money, half cent comes to Measure R, and so a lot of the other, the larger purchases that people make outside the city, we get a piece of that. So I believe the estimate right now is running at about, normally you would say half percent is half of what we get, we get one percent of normal sales tax, so half should be half, so you should be, Measure R should be fifty percent of what you normally get in, in sales tax. We're running at about, I think, fifty-seven percent, I know, so we can see that the extra seven percent is from sales that are occurring outside of our, of our community. Culture and Rec, which is largely funded by the Galt markets as well as other recreation fees, we're anticipating a decrease in the current year, but then to kind of steady and level off the first, the next two years in the budget, we don't anticipate major fluctuations. However, the Galt market is subject to fluctuations in the economy, we saw it decrease several years ago when gas prices really went up. We've, we've had a pretty good run the last couple of months, and so we're hoping it continues, but it's always, you know, a little bit, I know Armando gets a little bit nervous when we start talking about revenue estimates, because there's things in there that we don't necessarily control, but we're feeling pretty good about where the market is right now. And the gentleman that got up this evening said the market was, was doing pretty well, and I would have to agree with that assessment. One of the other big program areas or revenues that we have in the city, or at least historically, has been building fee revenue, and that's from both kind of regular building permit fees as well as developer fees. Those are all very low over the next two years, we're not anticipating large increases in, in home building and commercial building. There are some projects anticipated, we're hoping that our fee reduction and some of the streamlining measures that community developments brought forward will have an impact, inspire some residential growth. We have a number of commercial projects that are in the queue, we have a few in the industrial park that are, that are moving forward. We also have Walmart and a few other retail projects that, that are looking, looking like they may happen on the horizon. We're hopeful that we'll see more retail and other commercial development in the future, but we're not, we're not anticipating that, or at least we're not budgeting for that in, in this budget. So one of the things we're really actively working on is the Simmerhorn project on the other side of the freeway, new freeway interchange that we've got potential new buyer, and we've been working with that individual to see what that project on that site might look like, so we're, we're hopeful that that might move forward, but we haven't projected any revenue associated with that project. One of the areas, and we bring this forward to the council probably every year, we, we continue to see annual deficits in our landscape and lighting districts for the northeast area and the west side. We have no automatic consumer price index adjustment, so the, the rates that were set whenever these districts were, were established ten, fifteen years ago, they have, there's not been a single rate increase, and as costs go up, we're just slowly eroding those funds, and so in the next, we, we've got it balanced over the next two years. We have made some changes to help balance it, but there's going to become a point where we're going to have to make some decisions of whether we go back to vote of, of the, the residents in those areas to seek some additional compensation or, or tax revenue associated with those, or whether we start to cut services. That'll mean not weeded as much, or lawns aren't cut, or there's things that we just aren't able to do because we don't have the money to do them. We're not there yet, it's just kind of a little bit of a heads-up warning for the, the council. It's something we're going to have to deal with at some point in the future. Some, some good news, the Galt Middle School JPA, there's a significant decrease in the current fiscal year. There are no levies in the past, there have been levies assessed to property owners. This is the shopping center across the street, Galt Plaza, years ago, or bonds issued to, to finance that project, and we're done, we're getting, we're almost done paying that off, so that will realize significant savings for us as well as the property owners in that shopping center. I think, I think last, last year was, the last year, was it a year ago that they made payments? That was the last one, right? So there's, you'll see a, a change that reflected, and there, so there's, the final debt payment is due in September, reflected in fiscal year two thousand thirteen, but no amounts are reported thereafter. Another new area that we've added is the Galt Habitat Foundation, the council approved this earlier this year, or maybe it was the end of last year, out of the waste, near the wastewater treatment plant, we have purchased some land that we're using for mitigation, Swenson Hawk mitigation for Walker Park, central interchange, twin cities interchange, that we can self-mitigate those requirements, and so we had to set up a foundation, and so you see it's ever budget line item now in order to recognize those amounts for, we're getting, we're getting lease payments from the farmer out there, and there's also payments through some biological assessment work that we have to do out there. Okay, so that's, that's the revenue side, the expenditure side. The total for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, this is the first year, is, is twenty-seven point five million, and for the second year in the budget is twenty-seven point three million. Current fiscal year budget is twenty-nine point seven million, and the current fiscal year revised estimate is twenty-seven point two million. So we've saved quite a bit of money in the, in the, the current year, two point five million dollars. A lot of that, this is total citywide projects, and it's not just operating costs, there's a lot of capital projects that go into that, other things, so we, and there's a lot of, you know, not just general fund, I guess is what I'm saying, this is all city funds, but you can see kind of just a snapshot of where we are. If we just focus down on the, the two big budget areas that we try to, we like to focus on because they do impact the city's operations more than anything else, and that's the general fund and the Culture and Recreation Fund. Combined operating budget for fiscal year thirteen is thirteen point nine million, and fiscal year fourteen is fourteen million. Current fiscal year budget is thirteen point seven, so there's a slight increase over the next two years. Current year revised estimate is thirteen point two, that results is reflected by staff vacancies that we've had as well as the changes we made when we adopted the, the personnel, new MOUs for the personnel back last year when we adopted last year's budget. Again, we didn't have contributions to PERS, we didn't have the furloughs, we didn't have some of the other changes in there, and so that's why we have savings in the current year because of those amounts. Key issues, we'll go through some of these, there is a detailed description, each department and the recommended changes are included within each departmental narrative, I'm not going to go through each one, but again, if the council wants to go through anyone in particular, we can do that. I will talk about the key things that are kind of going on citywide. There is a recommended adjustment of ten percent for healthcare increases, it's based on kind of previous experience, what we've seen over the last several years, and so those are driving city costs up citywide. There are increases to PERS, the PERS rates that continue to go up every year, and so we built those into the budget. There's a few other things that are, that are citywide that I don't have highlighted in here, but there's some IT work that we're going to be doing, we're going to be changing out some of the old operating systems and office, office packages that we have that are old, and I know SAP has experienced frustrations with compatibility and other things, so we're going to be undertaking a project. So you, you see that throughout the budget, as you look at each one, you'll see some money scattered throughout to make some of those updates, to make sure we're no longer using outdated software, and we just keep, we keep up with the times as much as we can. One of the issues we, we see on the horizon is the solid waste fund that we have that is, is experiencing some deficits because of administrative costs and the costs of providing services. We do have, in, in the budget and in the, the fee structure, there is a small amount for administrative costs, and there's also what's called a source reduction recycling element fee that was reduced a number of years ago, and it's no longer able to support the level of services provided by the city. And when I say that, that means we do all the billing, or at least the billing for residential, for, for solid waste and for cow waste. We provide a lot of administrative support to, to deal with that, and we also manage the contract. We have an annual house of hazardous waste event, and so our recommendation in the budget is that we cancel next year's house of hazardous waste collection event that we have out at the, the Galt market. There are venues in the county that people can go and drop off their materials. It's not as convenient as what we have here, but at this point, we're not able to continue that program, or at least I'm recommending that we not, otherwise the money does have to come out of general fund because we don't have the adequate resources in order to address that. So one of the things that I will be looking at bringing back to the council next year is an increase in the S R R E fee in order to pay for that service. I think it's important for the community to have a local drop-off that's provided free, that we don't end up with batteries and pesticides and oil being dumped down the drains or in garbage cans or anything else, and so there would be a, a recommendation next year in order to pay for that event, and then we'll be working with cow waste in order to make any adjustments to the administrative fee so that the city is not subsidizing the cost of those services, and that the rates are appropriately charged in order to cover the services provided by that, that entity. Redevelopment elimination, we've already talked about this, this is a big impact to the city, not only because of the projects that we have that we're not able to, or we may not be able to, to deliver in the short term and the long term, but redevelopment provided, we, there was a lot of administrative costs that went into running the redevelopment agency, from the finance department, city manager's office, IT, city clerk, city attorney, community development, all the people that went into running the redevelopment agency, we would receive, the general fund basically pays those positions, but then the redevelopment agency would reimburse the general fund for those costs. In the last year, the current year, the general fund received approximately five hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars from services provided to the redevelopment agency in the prior year. Under the new law, that administrative cost is capped two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and so that is a net impact to the city, manual loss of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars each year going forward. So that is a, you know, all the, we talked about Walmart coming in, four hundred thousand dollars, that almost wipes it out entirely, just by that one action of the state, so it definitely has a, an impact for us going forward. Talk about staffing a little bit, we have, there's a hundred and forty full-time positions in both fiscal years. Again, I already mentioned that sixteen of those positions are currently frozen. There are a few new recommended positions that I'll go through. The good news is we are recommending two new sworn police officers for Measure R. We feel we're in a position now to be able to afford to, to hire the last two remaining officers. This will fulfill the initial expenditure plan approved by the voters, which was seven officers and two dispatchers, so once we hire those two, we'll be fully, we'll be fully meeting the objectives of the voters. And then one of the things we'll be asking the council to do next year is to adopt a new updated expenditure plan. Since we've accomplished the first one, then we'll be looking over the next five years, what do we want to do next moving forward? We, the, the funds are obviously restricted for police services, they cannot be used for anything else, but we need direction, we'll be coming forward to the council with some recommendations on how to spend those, even if we don't have much money in the, in the first year or two, because most of it will be going towards these officers. Down the road, as more tax revenue comes in, as Walmart's built, we'll have some additional revenue that we'll need to decide whether, what we want to put it towards, whether it's equipment, technology, more officers, or, or whatnot, and that will be a decision we'll be working on over the next year with the city council. One of the, one of the, you know, we've got sixteen frozen positions, we are recommending unfreezing one of those positions, and that's the finance administrative assistant position that's been frozen for, for several years. The, the level of workload in that department continues to increase, and you really need a full-time body there in order to accommodate and, and support the level of work that goes on from the director, as well as the accounting managers and all the staff in that department. So we are recommending that, I guess in, in exchange, not really in a direct exchange, but we are recommending another position be frozen, and that's the building permit specialist position, that, that individual is retiring, and instead of filling it with another full-time position, we're recommending changing that to a part-time position to reflect the reduction in level of staffing or staff work effort in order to process permits and so forth. So we recommend freezing that, the full-time position, and, but filling it with a part-time position. And so that's the same thing we've been operating in finances, there has been a part-time administrative assistant that's been filling in, so we're recommending moving that to a full-time position, really to just, to move the resources where we think the, the workload is, is, is needed.
Excuse me, Jason?
Yes.
Is that going to slow down the permit processing approval of, of a part-time position?
It's a good question. I, I hope, I hope not, I believe that we're in recruiting right now for a qualified individual. We are putting a number of hours in there in order to effectively manage that, that program, and so my hope is that we will continue to deliver the service we're delivering. We would be recommending it if we didn't think we could keep up with the workload. If that changes, if things, you know, the building activity starts to increase, we may be coming back to the council even before the next budget and saying, hey, we need to increase this to full-time, but right now, we're going to, we, we think we can, we can do it.
And I hope that'll be the case, you come back and say, we need it full-time.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll remember you said that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
The other one we've already talked about tonight, this is freezing, or unfreezing the senior building inspector position and freezing the building inspector position in exchange. Parks and Rec, we, or Parks, I should say Parks, which is now under Public Works, we laid off, eliminated the park superintendent position, you'll see that reflected in the budget. And one, one of the reasons we did that was to put more resources, more personnel in the field instead of the management side, and as we've combined and consolidated Public Works, it allows us to do that, I think, effectively and efficiently. So what you see here is the elimination of that position, but the addition of a park maintenance worker position, full-time park maintenance worker position, as well as several part-time park maintenance worker positions, again, to put more resources, resources in the field. Few other changes to reflect the, I think the changes in the Public Works Department, the street superintendent position title, job description we're recommending be changed to facilities maintenance manager. That will be coming back later for kind of official action by the city council, anytime we, we change, make some major changes to a job description, we'll see that, but that's part of the, the budget that's being presented here. Because it now does include not just streets, that supervisor also supervises the park staff, and so we thought it was a more reflective title, and we need to adjust that. We've been, we've had that almost a year now, when we first made the change, we told the council that we would be doing it as a little bit of an experiment and seeing how things are working, and I've been very pleased with the results, and seems to provide a, a better, more efficient operation. Other minor change is just changing the title of utility Other minor change is just changing the title of utilities superintendent to utilities manager. Not a whole lot of major significant changes there, doesn't adjust anything else. There may be some other minor job description changes with that as well. One of the other more significant changes is in the water and wastewater division. This kind of reflects what I talked about earlier with placing more emphasis on facilities maintenance jobs. So instead of, we've actually eliminated, we're recommending eliminating two positions between water and wastewater, a water operator and wastewater operator. Both those positions are vacant right now, so we would not fill those, we eliminate those and replace them with a full-time senior plant mechanic, maintenance position, and then two part-time maintenance worker. There's a lot of work that needs to happen out at the wastewater treatment plant, the water facility that don't need wastewater and water operators, that just general maintenance tasks that we think we can do more effectively, more efficiently, and less expensively by making these changes. So these actually result in a cost decrease for the water and sewer funds by making these Several temporary positions, we had a lot of requests to make part-time temporary positions. Full-time positions, there's certainly a lot of need out there to add positions. We're not in a position right now to be adding full-time positions, and so what we did was compromising. We said, okay, well, we can increase, recommending increasing the hours of some of these temporary positions and making them into regular part-time positions, providing a little bit more stability, a little more hours for each of the departments so they can accomplish the work that needs to get done. And I've got a list of here of the position changes. The first is adding four hours to the IT technician position to reflect the workload in that division, two office assistants in parks and recreation for customer service at the front counter. Again, these are not new positions, these are just increasing hours in the existing positions that we already have. An office assistant in public works, records assistant in PD, and administrative analyst in finance. Again, these are recommended to increase from a temporary position with limited hours to adding a few more hours, but not to the level of a full-time position. At some point, I would imagine each of these positions will be recommended for full-time status, but it's not recommended in the two-year budget that we're presenting for each night. Not that there's not a need for it, because I think in a lot of cases, there is a need for a lot of these positions. There's a lot of need across the whole city. We're just trying to manage it and balance it in the best way that we can with the resources that we have. We do have the funding request that council asked that we bring this back as part of the budget process. The Gulf Area Historical Society, their annual $10,000 request for McFarland Ranch is included in your packet, and so we'll be asking for direction from the council on that to budget. There is money in the budget for that, but we do want to get your approval on that, or at least direction to either keep that in there or to remove that amount from the budget. There are a number of other cleanup items. As we were printing the budget, there were a few departments where we had caught some typos, some errors, some mistakes. That has been attached to your packet in the staff report. There's a list of things in there. I wasn't going to go through all of those. In the, in the current year, there is some additional costs in there because we had, we had taken out some costs for budget savings for overtime and part-time salaries and salary savings that we needed in order to cover some of the additional expenditures for the RIMS program and some other things, and so we need to add that money back in. In the first fiscal year, there are some changes. There actually results in a decrease in the budget of about $17,000 in the second year. There's a need, there was the Buxton study. We're recommending, that had been taken out because of the loss of redevelopment. We're recommending that be put back in. That's about $15,000. So in the second year, it results in a total increase of $11,000 of what's presented here. If you want to go through any of those specific items, we can do that. That's kind of the budget in a nutshell. You know, I went through and highlighted, tried to highlight the major, the major points. Certainly, within each department, there's minor adjustments here and there, and those are reflected and discussed in the narrative. Council desires, we can go through those, and I'll turn it back over to the mayor for questions and comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor Powers, do you have any other budget that you wanted to look at in more detail at this time?
While you're thinking, let me just say another recognition of staff. We just kind of did it under the CIP. I think it deserves another mention here because while the public works department largely puts together the CIP, every department is involved in the operating budget. Finance really plays a key role in here in this, but every department is very involved in February, March, April, kind of rough months for people as they're combing through. Especially now, it's always easier when, oh, I want this, I want that, let's add to the budget. We're not in those times where we can just, you know, put stuff in there. It's very difficult, and we have multiple layers and levels of cuts, and I know that sometimes it's painful. Richard commented on my level of detail. I know that can be very annoying to staff sometimes, but I definitely, we do our best to present something to you that we can support and we can recommend for adoption. So having said that, I'll turn it over to the council.
Okay, we'll start down with Councilman Singleton then, while Vice Mayor Powers.
I've already said my name.
Okay, very good. You sure?
Well, I'll probably come back.
Okay. Councilman Shelton, any?
Wanted to see if there's any public input.
Well, we can come back to that.
Okay. No questions at this time or comments?
I'm with Councilman Shelton. I'm going to probably say first.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, okay. No one in the public has any questions? I knew there'd be somebody.
Sorry to come in here all this time and everything, but one thing that...
Go ahead, please.
One thing with the water meters now, from what I understand, we've got $1.8 million in the fund. My nays, could you write a check for $1.8 million right now?
I'm not really sure of the specific question.
It's a question. Could you write a check for $1.8 million from that fund?
Oh, from the water meter fund?
Yeah.
Actually, I believe we have that amount still set aside.
Okay.
If it hasn't been used for the meters, the fund balance has been reduced, but the amount that has been set aside for the meters is still set aside just for that purpose.
Okay, so my question, I have to ask questions. I can't make statements all the time because I'm the kind of guy that likes answers. So the water meter, there's a 12-inch sub in there that, Phase 1, all you have to do is turn the water off, undo the two nuts, take it out, put the water meter in, close it back up, and you're done. It's about a 15-minute job. We've already paid for the water meters, we've already paid for the service to put the water meters in, so my question is, why have we, I keep hearing that we keep putting it off and putting it off, and I've been listening to that for almost 20 years. So each time you put it off, the water rates continue to rise. Well, if the water rates continue to rise, I'm losing money. Because if I was on a water meter with my wife and myself, we use less water. So my question is, is there a definitive answer somewhere amongst all of you to be able to tell us, the homeowner, when are you going to start Phase 1? That's what I would like to know. Sometime, when? Don't push it off while we don't know, we're still trying to do this, still trying to do that, but when? Just when? Give us some kind of an idea of when, because we were told when six years ago.
I think we're about to answer that with the best of our ability.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Richard for a response, even though I know Richard won't be here when, when we implement that. I know he and his staff, and we have John Griffin, who we brought back, is working on that. I believe last time we spoke, we were looking at really getting this kicked off towards the end of the year, but Richard, what do you think is a reasonable timeframe? And maybe you can talk a little bit about, you know, why the delay, what takes, what the process looks like as far as doing the water meter installation program?
Well, a couple of things are at play here. One is that it's not as simple as was described for all of the services that need to be installed in Phase 1. And again, Phase 1 being the post-1992 services. That's, what, 20 years ago now? So it's unlikely that all those older services, it'll be as simple to do as go in there, lift the lid, swap out a component. So the specifications for doing all that needs to be incorporated into the project proposals or, you know, customer proposals. That's a relatively minor part of the holdup. I think the bigger holdup has really been, well, actually two other, two other holdups. The other piece of that is the direction was we were going to some kind of automated reading program, and the city actually has in place two different types of meter reading equipment now, aside from the old manual method. We have what's called a touch read system, and some of the newer meters now, we have the radio read, which you can, you can pick up the reads as you drive by. And those, those systems are obviously different, and the study that was done back by HDR, I think a couple of years ago, really kind of didn't come to a definitive answer as to which way we ought to go. Well, that study was done in 2008, and I know that people that I've talked to in the industry, including, you know, Lowdy, for example, going through this right now, originally started with, had touch read systems, had, starting moving into what's called a drive-by systems, and is already switching over to what's called a fixed network, where you, you don't have the car driving around picking up the meters, you have just remote units that lead them automatically. And that's where everybody's headed. So, you know, the thought of, that was in this 2008 study of, well, specify all this stuff and put up a bid and see what looks good for you is really, isn't the way to go in my opinion, because the costs of labor keep going up regardless of, you know, what you do with your salaries and so forth for other variety of reasons, and the cost of hardware keeps going down. So in my mind, going to a fixed, a fixed network system is really the way to go, and again, working through that process and coming up with what system would ought to be, and it's just taking some time. The third thing, and really I think is the heart of the issue, we've just had a lot of turnover in public works, that this has just not been the top priority. We've been focused on the Central Gulf Interchange, the Lidl Pump Station project, and the Twin Cities Roundabout project, and even if those are done by consultants, there is still a significant amount of staff time involved in managing those consultants and managing the projects that are in, and the meter project just has not gotten the attention that I think it deserves. So I have tried to look at it in my short time here. As I mentioned earlier, I'm hopefully able to get back to the council with some suggestions as to how to go forward, but they're not ready for prime time today. So I would say that it can be, we can, we can get started on the project in 2012. Certainly in this coming fiscal year, it should be able to get done. But it's going to take some commitment on the part of the current staff and the new director to really make that a priority.
Thank you. Can I say something? And I hope I'm not opening a can of worms here, but I asked this question when I wasn't on the city council, you know. I don't think a lot of people realize that when we put those meters in, that means everybody else, your, what you're paying is going to go down. I think it probably means the person with two people in the household is going to be still paying the same. The people with 10 households, people in the household is going to be paying more. I mean, just to assume that just because we put, because I, I'm a single household, and I thought, whoa, I'm not going to be paying very much money real soon, and I got told that's probably not the point. You know, it's probably going to be an increase for the people that are like a 10-household person, your fault.
Well, keep in mind that roughly 50% of the water use is outside the home. So if you're the kind of person who likes a nice lush lawn and lush garden and all the landscaping and something like that, and you keep it watered, even if it's just you by yourself, you could have a pretty high water bill with a water meter. If you have an older home that doesn't have all the water conservation fixtures in it, even if you're a senior citizen living alone on a fixed income and you've got all the old plumbing, you could wind up with a higher bill. So it's not quite as simple as saying, well, in theory, the average will stay the same. If you're above the average, you're going to pay more. If you're below, you can pay less. There's more to it than that, which is another reason why, frankly, I am concerned that, you know, the direction was to just do Phase 1, and there really is no plan to go forward and get the rest of the city metered, which has to happen in, you know, 2020, whatever it is. And that'll be a concern, where you're going to have a large part of the population metered and a large part un-metered, and that will be a problem for you in the future. So one of the angles I was looking at was the potential for getting them all done with a financing program. So I don't have an answer on that for you either, but, and then when you do everyone, then you really go back and reset your rate structure. For example, right now, you have a very, very low base charge. It's what's $2 and some cents a month. You know, that's unheard of. It really is too low, which means that you, you have a higher portion of your revenue coming from the commodity charge, which is going to be subject to real wide swings when people change their usage. The standard in the industry now is somewhere between 30 and 50% of your revenue should come from that base charge. You're nowhere near that. So you really need to go back and look at, at your rate structure, which the time to do that is once you've got all your meters in and you've got the good data that you know what's really going to happen. Right now, it's a guessing game.
I know that is a concern that we all have, and we know we're going to have to deal with it. So it was worth taking a little time to address that, and I appreciate your comments. Any other comments from the public before we go?
So again, this, what's before you tonight is not the adoption of the budget against provide, the presentation, receive comments, feedback, and things that you want us to change or move forward with or presented as presented tonight at the next council meeting.
Okay. Groove, something groove, I'm sorry.
All of the above. Just don't call me late for dinner. Overall, I like the budget, and trust me, it's very dry reading.
Why?
Having gone over it one and a half times. If there's any way possible, one of the areas I know we're really lagging and we shouldn't be is in our IT. I mean, one and a half people just want to cut it. If there's any way in the next budget, we can find some money somewhere, we really need to see a way of getting, getting another person on board, even if it's another half person.
I agree. I mean, I think that is an area that's hard. We're going, two years ago, we had one person. Last year, we added a half lot, and now we're going to one and three quarters. So we're making some movement in the right direction, but I agree that for a city our size and the amount of infrastructure we have for IT, and we've done comparisons to other jurisdictions and look at the number of systems, we should probably have between three and four full-time IT staff. We're nowhere near that, and so we're making do the best way that we can, and I would imagine that if we can afford it going forward, that would be one of the first positions we look at making full-time. But we're just, I just, you know, so I agree.
Throwing an idea at you, since one of your biggest users of IT is the police department, you might want to consider combining and, I think Supervisor Gross remembers this play back then, he actually had a records person who was also our IT. Maybe go back to that, fund it through, if possible, through Measure R or one of the other methods we have for the police department.
Anything else?
Sorry.
Anybody else?
I do have something I want to say, and it does, I'm going to have to vote no again on the $10,000 for the Historical Society. And the reason being, I feel that when the four, there were four of us here, and we did ask that the money be used for nonprofits, and that was brought back, and then there was some concern that there wasn't enough time to go about the procedure this year, and I feel there was. So I just want to let you know that the $10,000 to this Historical Society is a no for me still.
Any other comments?
Well, you already know how I feel. I'm completely opposite.
And that is, that is one area that specifically we do would like some action on.
And you've broken that.
Right, okay. I'd have that as a separate line item.
Yeah.
And I think if I remember correctly, what we talked about previously was that it was a little bit difficult to cut that off in this year because it was almost like we had indicated that it was going to go on, and for them to not have time to adjust their budget in this instance seemed a little unfair.
Well, my feeling is the opposite. I think we brought it up with plenty of time for people to adjust their budgets, because it was way before we were adjusting ours.
to adjust their budgets, because it was way before we were adjusting ours.
Okay. So do you need anything definitive on that at this point? Do you need us to take a poll?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, would like some direction on whether to include that in the final budget document that the council will consider at the next meeting.
Can I just poll, or do we need a vote, do we need a motion or anything?
Take a motion, I think would be good.
Okay.
Well, I thought, didn't we ask for this to be, uh, come back as a lottery item for other nonprofit agencies to also bid on this?
Well, I think we're about here, dear.
I think the direction...
Okay, so we're going to still vote on this, though?
Yeah, I think the direction at the last time was to, to bring this back at the budget, at the budget process, that the council decided not to change the process for, for nonprofits at that time, but that you would still have to consider the request of the Historical Society as part of the budget process. So they decided, decided, okay, next year, we'll put a, a, a process in place that allows anybody to compete for the funds. But for this year, we weren't going to, we weren't going to do that, we would just consider the Historical Society request as it's always been considered. I believe that was the direction.
That was my recollection also.
Yes, that was.
Okay, so are we ready to take some action on this? We do, does require a motion?
I'll make a motion that we received the recommended biannual budget.
That part actually doesn't require a motion. I think what we need a motion on is the grant.
On the...
I was already in the process.
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
That's all right. And the number two was to consider the funding request for the Gulf Area Historical Society as we discussed for this one portion and, so.
So the recommend, or the motion is that we...
As provided by staff.
That we approve the $10,000.
Right. Is there a second to that motion? We have a first and a second. Any other discussion on it? If not, I'll call for the vote. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
No.
Councilmember Singleton?
No.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion is passed with two nays. If I can ask for clarification, is that for year one or both years of the budget?
For the historical society.
For the historical society, $10,000. Was it just for the first year?
Year one.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
The money, the, the $10,000 is actually in there for the two years, but you're only approving the allocation of Historical Society in year one. Year two would be available for other nonprofits to compete for.
Correct. Okay, is there any other detail items that we need to go over? Anybody? I just had a couple of questions. And one of the things that I always...
You've got to make the staff sweat a little bit. They'll, they'll hear, they want to ask, answer your questions.
We could ask them to take their turn and come up to the podium.
No, no.
Well, I'm just going with my recommendation.
Okay. All right, are you guys ready for mine? You know me. No, actually, I just have a couple, and it has to do with professional service increases. And this one is in community development. And I'm looking at the 2012, 2013, and it jumps from 2,000 to 60,000. And this may be one of those items that you've just moved in the funds around, but I'd like a clarification on that one. It's on page 77 in our budget.
I'll ask Sandy Carrier to address that question.
Yes, the, the 2012, 2013 budget has $60,400. The bulk of that is the housing element update, which is required for October 13, some consulting services there, as well as, staff is proposing, under the streamlining provisions, that we do a comprehensive amendment to the zoning code matrix, the, the land use matrix, particularly to look at streamlining some of the conditional use permit requirements that would require some analysis and some CEQA particularly, to try and make more permitted by right uses with certain development standards, rather than all the conditional use permits that are currently in there, so that businesses wouldn't have to go through that process as often.
So this is like a one-time situation?
Yes.
Because of the housing element?
The housing element, and then a zoning ordinance matrix update.
And so we will be hiring outside people?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see, the other one also was professional services, and it's on page 100, and it's in traffic safety. Again, the budget for 2012, 2013, the professional services jump up about 20,000 from the previous estimated expenditures of 51 to 72, and then it continues at 72 for professional services.
That's actually moving it from one fund to the other, and that's why the increase.
Okay. And those were the only questions I, details that I had regarding the budget. So, sorry, dang. So you just, we just need the action from this is, you want to read that, city clerk?
I do. Receive the 2012 to 2014 recommended biannual budget, solicit public input and ask questions. Number two, consider the funding request from the Gulf Area Historical Society, which we've already done. And number three, provide direction to staff on any proposed changes or modifications to the recommended budget.
So I don't see any other action that we need to take. We took care of item number two, and one we discussed, and there is no major changes.
Okay, we'll bring both the CIP and the operating budget back to the council for adoption at the next council meeting then.
And I think we want to take a moment to look at those faces out there and say thank you for all your hard work. I think over the past months, I've seen a little bit darker circles under the eyes, and I think we, we owe you a debt of gratitude for all your hard work and your loyalty, and we do, as a council, I'm sure, appreciate everything that you've done, under not the best circumstances, not getting a big bonus, a big Christmas bonus or anything like that. So we feel like we've got some very special and very qualified people, and I think this has shown up at this time when you could have maybe not tried to do your best, but I feel like you all did, and especially our finance director, who hasn't talked to me in a while because she's been buried working on this budget. So I think our council should, at this point, before we close, give these people a hand of applause here.
Mayor, if I could just jump in for just a moment, I would like to acknowledge, Michelle Neely, this is her first time, she's been involved with the budget process, but she was actually lead during this cycle, so it was a learning process. So she actually took charge of the processes and emails to departments and coordinating efforts with Jason and other department heads. So special thank you to Michelle, and also the other managers that we have, Stacy and Donna as well. So a lot of ours, but I just wanted to acknowledge Michelle's efforts as being the lead person during this cycle. So thank you.
We so do that. Do you want another hand? Say thank you to Michelle. And, and you all deserve that, too. And unless there's any comments from staff, comments from council?
Just thanks, thank you, council, for being so supportive of staff. It means a lot.
Well...
Thank you for your dedication, all of you.
And I think, I have to say, I think it's easy to support this staff, so. Okay, let's adjourn.
Thank you.
And go home. Thank you, everybody.